Seats. Vanessa, are we all good?
We're good.
You guys ready? Colin, you good? Okay, we're gonna bring this April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four special board meeting to session. It is nine oh clock, according to my thing, not according to that clock. So can I get Supervisor Satello to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you so much. Can I get an acknowledgement of certificate of posting?
So moving.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, four zero. Do I have to do any announce out that Supervisor Gonzalez will not be here today? Just so everyone knows, just so everyone's aware. She has had a conflict, so. Okay, we're gonna go to the, because this is a special board meeting, there is no public comment for items not on the agenda. So we're gonna move right into item one point A, which is review and approve and ratify the Belf, am I saying four? Belfor?
Belfor.
Belfor contract, who's gonna be presenting on this, CAO Spinoza? Okay, so.
We have County Council presenting that item today.
Okay, great.
Yes, what what has occurred here is that Belfor has completed the work that they were approved to do. And the board has two resolutions that allow this company to be paid because they were hired on an emergency basis. I was asked to review a current billing, it's approximately two point six to two point seven million, under the resolution. And the resolution didn't quite cover, in my opinion, what they did or allow the payment, even though admin had approved the payment. Ensure that the work was done and that they were, they should be paid. So I indicated that this should go to the board, so the board can ratify administration approval of the invoice and pay it. So that's really all it's here for.
Okay, so we're gonna open it up to public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Bringing it back to the board, any questions or comments? Nope. Can I get a mention?
Move to approve as recommended.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So that's four oh. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna move on to item one B, receive an informational presentation from County Administration regarding the quarterly fiscal update, financial update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite up Ramon Bond, he's our Budget Officer, he'll be presenting today's item one B and one C. And then later we have one D that'll be presented by Gracie Rodriguez. And today is a special board meeting, and typically we, over the years, over this past decade, we've tried to break in small segments, different portions of the budget. So we're taking it kind of a bite size at a time and not everything at once. And so today what we're gonna be sharing with you is how we're doing, how the fourth quarter went, how how the act for sharing with you the results. So we have a, we have a different quarter review for you, we have an overall balance, we're in the black this year, which we'll present. So I think it's very positive. This year, it's gonna be a little bit tighter, and that's what we're gonna be discussing with item one C, due to a lot of different factors, and we'll explain that as we go along. But with that, I just, I think in general, it's gonna be a fairly tight budget this year. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and pass it to Ramon, I wanna thank him for the work that he's been doing and working on to put this together. So Ramon, go ahead and start.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and get right into it. For those folks in the audience that have not met me, my name's Ramon Aban, I'm the Budget Officer for San Benito County. Thank you for being here today. And the first presentation will be about the quarterly budget update, so this'll bring us up to where we stand as of the current fiscal year. I wanna start with an overview of how we ended fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, because this information will let us know how we started the current fiscal year. So what you see in front of you is for the general fund, and we ended the fiscal year with more revenues and expenditures. We had seventy-six million dollars' worth of revenues, sixty-nine million dollars' worth of expenditures, which ends, ends up being an increase to the fund balance of six point six million. And in the next slide, we'll see that, how the revenues were made up, like what makes up the seventy-six million, we'll see it in the next slide. And all the information you have in front of you right now on the screen is part of the comprehensive financial report that the Auditor Controller's Office does every, every single year. And for, again, fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, that seventy-six million that you saw in the previous slide, you don't see it on the seventy-two million because I included other financing sources, which is on the second column. So on top of the regular operating revenues, which for the county are taxes, licenses, aid from other governments, which would be state money, federal money, interest, use of money on property is for interests that the county receives because of the work that's done by Treasury. And then we have fines, charges for services, and other revenue. So that makes up seventy-two million, that's the bulk of it. And then the additional amounts to make up that seventy-six million are from transfers in, leases issued, and subscriptions. The transfers in basically represent money that the general fund receives from outside sources or other funds, in this case, it would be trusts, AB one oh nine, those kind of things. And the, the leases issued and subscriptions, those are new financing sources for the county, and these are as a result of something that Auditor Controller's Office implemented in this fiscal year, twenty, ending twenty-three. And this is for presentation purposes, they basically look at leases and I think it's information technology type services. So it's for reporting purposes, but I wanted to include that as part of the revenues, because when folks look at the financial reports, they are included. Those items are actually included for, for us to know what the net change in fund balance is. And so that's why I summarized everything together as one lump sum. Next, we look at the expenditures. So the sixty-nine million dollars are composed of everything you see in front of you. These are general government expenditures, public protection, public assistance, education, recreation, and culture. And then we had debt service, we have, under capital outlay would be all the capital projects that were completed. This is for work completed, you see general government had a million dollars, public protection, one point four million. Then we had some capital outlay related to education, recreation, and culture. So all of those expenditures added up to sixty-eight million. And to arrive at the sixty-nine million total, again, we have to include some of these other financing uses. On the last column you see there, it would be the transfers out item. So that sixty-eight million, and then if we add that one point three million transfers out, in this case, that one point three million transfers out would be, in essence, the general fund contribution for different types of things. It could have, I didn't look at the details for that one, but I know the general fund did contribute to, towards capital projects, roads, those kind of things. So we see the revenue going in, we see the money coming in, this is how the money went out. Again, we had a six million dollar increase to the general fund, and that six million dollars is part of the fund balance now. So here you see, again, a summary of the different fund balance types that the county has. We have non-spendable, restricted fund balance, assigned fund balance, and unassigned fund balance. And then the next page, you'll see what makes up this, the different categories of fund balance. For the non-spendable, it represents prepaid expenses, and for those of you that maybe are not familiar with it, it basically represents services that the county paid in fiscal year twenty-three that are related for the current fiscal year. So when we pay for services ahead of time, the Auditor's Office, everybody in the county is directed to set aside some fund balance for those services that we paid. We paid for it ahead of time, and so we have to show it on the financial reports as non-spendable fund balance. On the restricted fund balance, we have a few items related to general government, such as the assessor's grant. And then we have some funds set aside for par's pension, and then we have ARPA. So the ARPA piece, it basically gives us the amount of available fund balance for the ARPA project beginning July first. So after all, the information was reviewed by Auditor Controller's Office, nine point one million is what was available for the current fiscal year. So that, it just shows we spent, of the twelve million we received initially a couple of years ago, we spent about three million, and nine million is available for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Other restricted fund balance includes items for public protections, such as sheriff programs or quarter programs, the district attorney, juvenile probation programs, and then regular probation programs, as well as this pipeline safety initiative. So the total restricted fund balance is nineteen, nineteen point five million, and basically, those are funds that are designed for specific purposes. Next, we have assigned fund.
Madam Chair, if I may add, if you lost your mind going back to the other slide. With regards to the restricted, the ARPA funding, the nine point one million, I just wanna make sure the board's aware that we've been meeting regularly with staff on the projects, with Steve, the sheriff, and other key folks that have projects going on, due to us making sure that we get this spent, or at least allocated by the end of this year. We still have time to spend the money after that, but we wanna make sure that it's allocated and it's, and we're in good standing with the feds on this. So there might be, we might have to come back and make some changes, specifically with the library and a few other things, because, you know, that project's getting kind of pushed out a little bit, and we need to make sure that, that we allocate funds. So I just wanted to make sure the board's aware, we're keeping a very close eye on it, we do not wanna give that money back, and if there are any changes, we will be coming back to your board. Thank you, Ramon. Thank you, Chair.
The next category of a fund balance is assigned fund balance, and we have some funds set aside for insurance and general liability, that's at eight point seven million. We have a little over half a million dollars in this River City item, and that represents a bank account that the county opened up a couple of years ago, related to.
Regarding three CE and the establishment of three CE and, and the creation of that, and us being a part of that. So we actually put that money in, into this bank account, and we've just kept at it, we've kept it there, we've been reimbursed. Actually, it was collateral, and we kept it, and it's there, still.
Exactly, it was cash collateral, and so it's still sitting in that bank, earning interest, which is helpful. We can talk about that probably at a different meeting, as far as, you know, what the board would like to do with the funds that are currently just kind of sitting there for now. The public ways and facilities, assigned fund balance is related to what is commonly known as teeter funds. The Auditor Controller's Office classifies those funds as part of the capital improvement projects. So that one point nine million that's assigned, I believe, is right now specifically for the old courthouse.
Yeah, it was prior to the fires, we were planning to address some of the, the issues in that building, then we had the fires, obviously, but we're still gonna keep that funding there. I think we're gonna still need to use that to remedy that building. So, well, we're, we're still working with Belfor, thank you for approving that, they're gonna, we're gonna go through the process. And, and the insurance hopefully will cover the complete rebuild of it, but we wanna make sure that we still have some funding there for that if we need to.
And that brings us to the unassigned fund balance. So the unassigned, unassigned fund balance represents balance available for the current fiscal year for general government operations. And that number as of June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three is thirty point three million. So that's typically what we, we can, sorry, that's the number we look at as far as general operation expenses for all general fund departments. So that's our starting point. So the next slide, now we're looking, now we're going into all expenditures for the first quarter through September thirtieth. And this is a high-level overview, it's a summary by fund, so that we can take a look at how we're doing. So for the first quarter of the current fiscal year.
Ramon?
Yes?
I'm sorry to cut you off. Go back a slide, sorry. So I just wanna be clear, so the unassigned fund balance, when you see that large number, thirty million dollars, it's significant, but there are other, we have allocated projects to it. We have road projects, we also have restricted, at the end of this slide, or this one or the next one, I don't remember if it's gonna be the next, I think it's the next one, that we have a plan for addressing our emergency fund reserves, so we actually increased that. So there, there is some, still some allocation, but the plan is, or plan was, to really focus in on roads, and so there's, there's still some, you know, some of that that we need to clarify coming down the pipe. So I just wanted to make sure it's not.
I appreciate that clarification, because that went right where my question was going to be coming to you, so thank you.
We need it, yeah.
And Madam Chair, as long as we're chatting quick, why are, why are we listing that as unassigned? I think that's really misleading for the public, and there's, to me, there's no reason, from a budgetary perspective, to have that in the unassigned. It should, most of that, we don't have any available, we're catching up still, we're kind of behind on reserves as far as being responsible.
Right.
I just don't quite understand why we have that listed as unassigned. If we can change that in any way, I would appreciate it, thanks.
And I think it's just the way it's documented in the act for, and the way it's been processed. And this year, I think what we'll do is we'll work with the auditing office, thank you for that input, we'll work with them, and make sure that it is restricted, based on the CIPs.
And even if, you know, because I know there, there's challenges with being able to rename things at their level, but defining what that means, even though it says unrestricted, it is restricted because it is committed, and breaking it down for where all that money's going, so that we do show, the bottom line is not much.
Yeah.
If any.
We have a significant amount of money going to roads, and significant going to facilities and other things, so, yeah. I just wanted to highlight that, because it's, you look at it, you're like, oh my goodness, we have a lot, we're flushed. Go ahead.
And I'm glad the questions came up, and Ray was able to clarify it on some of those things. So yes, even though it shows on the financial report as being unassigned, and it sounds like it's available for just general government purposes, the reality is that we do have, so that thirty million is the same amount that we need. Of that thirty million, we have to carve out a section for operational reserves, emergency reserves, and the next item will address the issue regarding reserves, which is gonna tie into that thirty million. So we'll, like Ray said, we'll talk to the Auditor Controller's Office and see if we can get them to maybe update the way the financial report is presenting the information.
Or if we have, if I could just clarify, if we have to take action to make sure that they are assigned, so that they are committed to roads, and they're committed to what our commitments are, just being able to have that shown, I think, would help the public a lot.
Yeah, and just, so the board's aware as well, you know, we've been working closely with Cecilia at ECG and other folks with the hospital, we've allocated funding for that. Obviously, we're still in somewhat of a, we're still submitting our documents, which will be submitted this month, but there is an allocation of funds that the board's committed, about approximately five million. But, you know, again, it's kind of, we're not sure yet, but we've allocated the funds, so these are, these are some of the things that we need to dial in and make sure that are restricted, yeah.
Well, and I think even if, we don't have to change our whole entire accounting system, but maybe even if there was just a slide that had unassigned with that dollar amount, and then listed all of the committed money is going to projects, and kind of what those are, and kind of what that bottom line is, would be helpful. Instead of, you know, revamping our entire accounting system to make, to show unassigned as something else, just adding a slide saying, here's the unassigned balance, but these are the commitments within it.
I can definitely do that. On, on the next quarterly budget update, I'll, I'll do something like that. Okay, so first quarter of expenditures for the general fund, we had, it says amended budget because it includes any amendments that general fund departments would have taken to the board between July first of twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, July first of twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Our adopted budget, starting July first for general fund, was actually a hundred nine million, and so you, you can see that the one, it went up approximately a million dollars. But anyway, the actual expenditures through September thirtieth were thirteen point nine million for general fund, and then overall, we are definitely within budget. That's what the far-right-hand column is telling us, it's the percentage expended to date, it's comparing the amended budget to the actual figures. Then the second quarter, we see that the general fund had actual expenditures of thirty-three million, that puts us at twenty-nine percent of expected expenditures. Overall, we're at twenty-three percent expended. Again, you can see that from one quarter to the next, the amended budget went from one-ten to one-fourteen. Again, this is all based on, you know, departments have new grants being allocated, new grants being received. As departments receive grants, they also have the budget for the expenditures, how they're gonna be using all that new money that they're receiving. That brings us to the third quarter of expenditures. Looks like not a whole lot was amended, between December, for the general fund, between December and March, it stayed very much the same, for the amended budget side of things, right? I hope everybody can see, a hundred fourteen million, that's the amended budget. And then, but the actuals for general fund, now we're at fifty-one million through March, so that puts us at forty-five percent, we're still within budget. And overall, we're at thirty-seven percent. Which, so far, it's, it's a good thing. I know the amended budget looks pretty high, some folks are kind of wondering like, oh, why is it so high? Part of it is because of some of the things that were mentioned earlier. We do budget for general fund contributions for issues such as roads and capital improvement projects, and so that, that's what brings our general fund budget to that high number. So we looked at the expenditures, now we're, we're gonna look at the revenue side of things, and our focus is mainly on the tax revenue. So earlier, we saw a summary of all revenues, and I think on the financial report, it shows it as tax revenue. It doesn't tell us, you know, what specifically is in that category. So here, we see the list of all taxes for San Benito County. And through September thirtieth, we can see that we've received six percent of the expected twenty-nine million dollars' worth of, of tax revenue. And our, our bulk revenue comes from property taxes, we also get a good amount of Proposition One Seventy-Two Public Safety, from the, this is from realignment money. And first quarter, we didn't receive a whole lot in property tax, nothing in property taxes, because as we all know, property taxes are due in December.
Usually, the third and fourth quarter is when we receive most of our property tax.
So here, here we see the jump, and through December thirty-first, we can see that a lot of property tax revenue was received. That puts us at thirty-seven percent received, as far as property taxes go. Overall, we're at forty percent. Eventually, our percentages will increase, and I think that's, it's common for San Benito County, probably.
Yeah, it's very common. And we've been tracking, I know we have Melinda Casillas here as well, they've been tracking, the last conversation I had is that, you know, there's been a very high turnout in submitting property tax, and we've been doing really well, the public's been doing well, making sure that they submit it timely, and according to the laws, local laws. So it, I think in general, we're pretty much on par, where we're calculated on the budget for this. And typically, it's like I said, third and fourth, you get some second quarter, third, second, third, and then you get, you know, the fourth quarter is typically what all the numbers kind of show.
So that brings us to, to the third quarter general fund tax revenue. So through March thirtieth, we've received overall about sixty-five percent. It, it would be nice if we had that seventy-five percent, but unfortunately, we need to wait for that property tax revenue to come in during the fourth quarter. And it's probably already, some of it has been received already, these are ongoing things.
And typically, it skews a lot higher at the very, very, because of everyone turning it, and then getting reported, and put it in the books and all of that. That's when, that's when typically we see the higher percentage later.
Overall, we're doing well, even though it shows sixty-five percent, you can see if we go down the list one by one, we did get a little extra in aircraft tax. We got, we received more than we anticipated, the budget was seventy thousand, and to date, we're at seventy-seven thousand. That's nice, unfortunately. nice. Unfortunately, in the scheme of things, it, it's a small piece of the puzzle. But everything else looks pretty good. Business, business license tax related to Measure H, we're at 94%. Even though that was through March, we'll see how we end up the fiscal year in the, in the next couple of months. And our TOT was budgeted at 300,000. And to date, we've received 257,000. So we're, we're above the 75% marker on that, which means we may end up the fiscal year with more than 300,000 dollars worth of TOT, which again is a good thing for the county.
Ramon, can we go back for just a second?
Yes.
So can we just clarify documentary transfer tax and that that's due to the interest rates of houses and it's slowing the housing sales market? So there's less transactions with recorded documents. That's why it's down to 52% in my opinion. Because when interest rates are good, refinancing will happen, more recordings occur. That's where the documentary transfer tax happens due to the sales. So I, I think that's just a sign of our economy right now.
Yeah.
Just to clarify for the public.
Agreed, yeah. And again, just, and, and so the public's aware and, and the board too. This is, you know, the ACFIR is actuals. So what we just shared with you is kind of what we ended the year with. This is kind of, you know, this is based on the budget and forecasting. So we're kind of forecasting how the year is going to turn out based on historical data. Typically, that's how we budget. And again, you know, ebbs and flows in the economy, the, you know, housing market, there's a lot of things.
Election cycle, it affects sales and spring, that's when sales pick up. So I just, it just seems very low. It's 52%. And that's, that can be typical, but it's an unusual situation. Sorry to change your flow there.
That's quite all right. I'm glad you're looking at this. And I know you have a pretty good understanding of it because of your experience with the clerk recorder elections department. So yes, we estimated 750,000 for documentary tra, transfer tax. Based on historical information, we, we thought, okay, you know, San Benito County's been doing well these past couple of years. We anticipated something similar for the current fiscal year. However, our, our estimates are not, you know, always 100% accurate because it, it depends a lot on external factors. In this case, the economy, the market account, housing, you know, how the housing economy is doing locally. And, and as we know, you know, things are not always doing great. Sometimes we have slowdowns and these taxes will show us, you know, whether or not the economy is doing great. And right now, we're at 52%. We'll see how the last quarter ends up, but chances are, it's, we may not hit that target.
And, and just so the public and the board's aware, when you look at property tax, that's kind of our bread and butter. Everything below is, you know, in the big scheme of things, it's, it's close to the numbers that we have, but it's not going to break us, you know, based on the, the actual numbers or the total numbers based on our budget. So. All right, Ramon, continue.
So next, we have a vacancy rate as a, a first. And for the general fund, we had a 16% vacancy rate. Roads at 40%, HSA at 37%, behavioral health 39%, child support at 39, I'm sorry, child support at 30%. And all, all other funds were, were fine. They had no vacancies. So the first column shows us the adopted FTE count for current fiscal year. So for all funds, we're at 650 approved or authorized positions. 470 of those were filled. And that left us with a 27% overall vacancy rate. And these numbers, even though they look static on the screen, they are not. Every day, every week, people are, you know, coming and going, depending on the department and depending on individuals. So this is something we wanted to share with you so that you can see a snapshot, you know, as of this point in time. That's where we were. I know roads is a concern. And if that vacancy rate seems kind of high, there's a chance that, you know, somebody was hired, hired within the last couple of weeks. And the vacancy rate, how it ties into the budget is this next slide, which shows us the third quarter budget sal, for salaries and benefits. For the general fund, salaries and benefits alone were budgeted at 39.2 million dollars. And actuals to date through March 30th, we're at 25.5 million, which means we're, we're within budget. You can see that 65% of the budget set aside for staff salaries and benefits are at 65%. When if we were, we expected 75%, but 65% is good because that difference is what, what we all have been referring to as salary savings. But in this case, as you all know, we went through negotiations not, not too long ago. And we had a cost of living adjustment of 7%. The county, after negotiating with groups, also agreed to improve on healthcare, you know, being offered to, to folks. And so all of those items are showing up as part of the actual amounts here. And like I said, we're doing fine. Overall, we're at 57%. And one thing to kind of keep in mind with this slide are the general fund tax revenues. So ideally, the general fund tax revenue should be able to make up for our general fund staff costs. So if we look at, overall, revenue was 19 million just from general fund tax alone. And actual expenditures for general fund, all general fund departments was 25 million. So we're, we're not quite there yet. Fortunately, I think Ray touched on that. General fund tax revenue is not the only revenue we do receive. So we also get aid from governments. We have charges for services. So all these other revenues that are a part of normal operations for general fund make up for that difference. Long story short, we're, we're doing okay. We're doing good right now. But we are monitoring the budget. We are looking at staffing. And it will be a little tighter going into 24, 25. But for current year, I think we're on, we're on target to stay within budget. Even with the cost of living adjustment that went into effect last October, the 6% that we expect in next fiscal year, we should be, we should be fine. And the last slide are, does anyone have any questions about anything that we discussed as, as related to the current fiscal year?
Okay, before we bring it back to the board, we'll open it up to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comments.
Okay, bringing it back to the board. Questions, comments, concerns?
Madam Chair.
Right ahead.
Some of these are going to be repetitive from year to year for me. The business license tax revenue, I think, is a misnomer. I, I know we set a dollar amount each year based on prior years. And the problem with that is that we have never been collecting all of our business license tax. And we don't have a, a system in place that works. I don't really know. I, we talk about it every year. I know Joe Paul has talked about it in the past and the, the amount of, we've tried to get an estimate on the amount or the percentage of businesses in the community that are actually paying the tax. And it's, I think there's a consensus among those that have looked at things that, there are a lot of businesses that are just ignoring the tax. And I, it's a, it's an ongoing frustration for me. I don't understand, it's not fair that we have a tax in place that some people abide by and others don't. And if they don't abide by it, there's no real consequences for them. So we should be collecting a lot more than 360,000 dollars. I know that's the budgeted dollar amount and we're supposedly on track to get that. But I, I still would like us to come back and look at this. You know, we're, we're here to talk about other items today that are discretionary, that one might argue we don't really have the money for, but we're not even going out and being aggressive and collecting taxes that are due. And I, there's no excuse for businesses to not pay the tax. It's not even that much money. And I'll say it again, I've said it every year. If, if we're not doing our job collecting the tax, it is completely unfair to the businesses that are paying the tax and we should get rid of that tax. So I just want to put that out there again. I've been harping on it since 2021 and actually before that. We need to get a handle on it. I, I don't frankly care about the bigger picture, that it's not a large dollar amount. This is a principal issue more than anything. And so anyhow, on that. And then the, the TOT, and I brought this up in the past, I'm going to bring it up again only because of the growth in the short-term rental industry. I want to make sure that we are, I want to make sure that we are getting all the short-term rental tax income that we should be getting. You know, I would at some point, I don't know, does Airbnb, for instance, just pay a lump sum to the county? Is it, does that tax money come from the individuals that rent out the homes? I don't really, maybe I should have, I just thought of this this morning, so I apologize, I didn't ask beforehand. But that's an area I'd like us to look at and just to make sure that we are getting, those are essentially like hotels. We should be, you know, we should be getting the, the money for those. So I'd like to see what growth we've seen in short-term rental sales, TOT tax over the years here. But again, especially, I, I know that that industry is, is growing quite a bit. And then the vacancy rate, I think, is another, another one that I've talked about in the past. And I'll continue to say, I know we have trouble hiring. I know it's a tough market in general, but that vacancy rate is too high. And if, you know, it's time to, it's time to look at eliminating positions. I say it every year, by necessity. And if these aren't realistic positions, then we shouldn't be hanging on to them to have flexibility in departmental budgets, because that's really what this is. I know they have to come back and ask for things, but we get it every year. They come back, well, you know, I didn't hire so-and-so, so I have, we have all this extra money. Let's go buy this gadget. I think we need to really get a handle on that, especially in light of, you know, the, the very historic, very historic pay increases that we, we have. We just simply, you know, we just simply can't afford to have, I don't, I think that's too many, 650 positions, this isn't realistic. So I, I would like to see us get that vacancy rate down. And if that means eliminating positions that are longstanding vacancies, then I think we should be doing that. That's all I have on the quarterly part. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any comments? Supervisor Sartell?
I just have a couple of questions. So we ended 22, 23 with essentially 6 million over, I think was in that, one of the first slides, right?
Correct.
Did, did that include that 6 million that we had received as part of that development agreement?
That did not include the $6 million.
Okay. I just, they were same amount. So I was like, oh, is that what led to the six, okay. On one of the first few slides, there was a category called Recreation and Culture. I'm just curious, what's included in Recreation and Culture? And I saw, it was listed in two different locations as revenue, or not revenue, but expenditures.
The Recreation and Culture category includes the work that is being done by RMA for parks in the county?
Okay. So that's just all, that's all the money that we've spent on parks?
Exactly.
So how come it's listed in two, it's on, it's on both sides?
Right. The reason it's listed on two columns is because the first column is related to current expenditures. That would be normal operating costs, salaries and benefits, services and supplies, all of that, all of those things. And then the second column, the reason it's listed on there again is because it's part of the capital outlay section, which means these are the costs related to capital projects for Recreation and Culture in this case. Even though it says Recreation and Culture, it's specifically for the parks, all the, whatever capital projects related to parks were conducted during fiscal year 22, 23, that is what that second column represents.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Special revenue funds, is that subvention?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I, you know, we talk about it and we say subvention and then I'm like, oh, special reserve fund. I think that's what that is. But just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly. And then I, with, regarding the vacancy rates, have we improved our vacancies from like the previous years? Are we sitting about the same? Do we know where kind of we are from year, you know, in year comparisons?
We'll bring up Penny Ring, Deputy CIO, NHR.
Good morning, board. I can't, what I can say, I don't have a hard totals in front of me, but I, for like behavioral health, I think we were at 63, 65 about last year. So we've come up a little bit. Roads, I don't have a hard total on that either, but I know we've done probably three to four hires since the winter. So we've had some increases. We don't have any hard totals for Health and Human Services or anything like that. But I would say, yes, we are about.
We're improving.
Yeah, we are improving. It's a, it's a little slow in some areas, but some other areas, it's been a little bit better.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll just, I'll add to that. I can, I can see that HR has been doing a great job. They've been publishing outreach. They've had special events with the public to provide interest to come work for the county. So I think they've been doing a really good job. And I can tell that we got a new PIO. We're working on addressing the library. We're, we've got a new IT manager. We have IT staff that's coming in that we have now filled for safety folks. So there's been a lot of, you know, we have Dana now. There's been a lot of hires, I think, great hires that we've had. And so I think, I think overall, we are hiring more. I do know that the percentages on the road, when you look at the numbers, this last year, there was an increase of staffing. So then that kind of skews the percentage a little bit. You know, they have hired more, but it, it still is, you know, that number's gone up too as well. So they've hired more than the, than the actual numbers. So the percentages are probably similar to what we're before. But, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have right now.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with Supervisor because Mickey, as far as the vacancy budgeting, it just comes off a little silly that we, 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 we say we, we don't spend money that we maybe necessarily don't need to spend. And that somehow means we have extra money and we're saving money. And so I think it needs to be addressed as well. I know there's not any, any bad intention with it, but it just, the way that it, that it plays out, I think it could definitely be addressed so that we're not acting like we're saving money by not spending money on, on things that may not need to be spent on. And then the other question I had was just, at some point, if we could get some breakdown of, of different departments that are subvention funded and, and how much of that, like behavioral health, for instance, how much of that is subvention funded versus general fund? I don't know the, the breakdown there. I don't know how we get that information, but if that's something we could have at some point.
We, we can do is we can provide a, a report, an overall report at the next meeting that includes subvention funds. And, yeah, we'll make sure that that happens for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zenger. I totally agree with the breakdown of departments and how much is coming out of the general fund. And keep it real simple. I mean, don't get technical on it. But being able to see what's funded through, you know, state and federal programs versus the general fund would be most helpful. I'm going to kind of throw a little monkey wrench in this when it comes to vacancy rates. Because AB 2561 by, I believe it's Assembly Member McKinner, has proposed that any bargaining unit that has 10% vacancy rate for over 180 days is going to require the county to have a program put in place to develop, implement, and publish on their website what the plan is and how they're going to fill those vacancies. I actually like this bill. And the reason I like this bill is it's showing a proactive way of filling vacancies. But also, we need to look at why are we unable to fill our vacancies? And we've had the conversation in the past. And I am not a huge fan of vacancy budgeting at all, but I do have some concerns that if we're unable, and after going through our strategic plan workshop, and HR being such a heated and hot topic about employees, if we don't start looking at why we can't hire people, then why have the positions? And if we're putting more burden on employees to get the work done, then we should be compensating them for the work that they're doing. I do not agree with just cutting positions, but this bill is going to make it impossible for us to not address the situation. And I think we need to address the situation. And I'd rather get ahead of this problem than be behind this problem. And I think we need to address the situation and I'd rather get ahead of this problem than be behind this problem. Um, because departments are being asked to do more with less. And if we can't hire people to do the work, it's going to hurt us in the long run, especially when we're going so actively after grants. Grants, you know, take staff time to manage and implement. And if we don't have the staff to do it, the grant isn't going to do us a whole lot of good. Um, it's just going to put more pressure on staff and you can agree with me or not agree with me, but I, that's my opinion. So um, also when you go back to the very beginning of this, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Cause everything, I really love the format. Maybe it's that I understand it better this year uh, than it last year. But I love how you presented this. It's very straightforward. And after uh, going through this last year and understanding more about some of our, our challenges, this was most helpful. But uh, it says our revenue totals uh, were seventy-six thousand, or seventy-six million eight hundred uh, or eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. Those were our revenues. But when you look at your breakdown, you're actually, when you add that all together, you're one point three-nine million dollars different from the breakdown. Is that because of an amendment to the budget? What's the difference? I just don't like having, you know, one point three million.
Are you talking about the transfer out, the negative?
No, I'm looking at revenue totals on the very second slide and then looking at revenues when you add the general with the special, the other financial sources.
So if we take the seventy-two million, six hundred, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one.
Right.
Dollar amount, if we take that amount, we have to add the transfers in, which is two million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And we also have to add the leases issued, seventy-seven thousand and some change. And then the subscriptions, one million, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. So one, two, three, four items added together should give us seventy-six million, eight hundred, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And it's possible I did the math wrong.
That's okay. If you could just take a look at that, cause I think it gives you seventy-four million. But maybe I'm wrong.
It, that's what it is. The seventy-six million is composed of transfers in, leases issued.
And not the transfers out. So the transfers out are misleading.
Well, you're absolutely correct.
Just, that's all I wanted to point out. It just, it's nothing against how, it's just, when you look at it, I'm looking at the breakdown of it. It looks like there's one point three and it is exactly the one point three nine one nine zero one.
That's what I was saying, the transfer, that's what I was saying.
But I want to make sure that it's clear to the public where that money is actually going, so.
Right, and the reason, first of all, first of all, the, the image you see in front of you is a direct capture from the county's financial reporting. And so I didn't want to reinvent the wheel. This is how it's presented for public purposes. And what I did on the summary side of things is I, I excluded transfers out. Because I was only looking at revenues, money coming in. And the transfers out, maybe I should have whited it out um, from this slide. Because the transfers out is also added to the expenditure side of things. This is where the sixty-eight million, we have to add the, the transfers out amount to the sixty-eight million to get us to that summary sixty-nine million.
I just want the public to understand that, that's all. I, 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 I pretty much knew, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't completely off. That's, that, besides that, I loved how everything balanced so nicely. I do have real concerns about um, our revenue generation and where we're going to project our revenue coming in. I agree with Supervisor Cosmic on the business license tax. If we don't have a plan in place on how we enforce, um, and we're looking at um, uh, other program, I mean, I'm assuming there's other programs out there that other counties have done to ensure that they are getting all of the businesses paying their, their uh, business tax. I, I'm, I'm sure there's a magical way we can make sure that this is being enforced.
What I'll do is I'll work with our Tax Director Treasure. She's been managing um, the program through H D L. We have a contract with H D L that actually manages it. What I'm going to do is, is see if we can schedule them for our next special meeting that can help us with the revenue side of things and just help us to um, understand what they're doing and what other things maybe we can do to obtain more tax um, and help them if any way we can. So I think that'll be something we can do.
Yeah, I, I think we need to be more, you know, aggressive in getting that. Um, when it comes to the T O T tax, um, I, I also agree that we need to make sure that we're uh, including those B and Bs. We also discussed um, the, the low-impact camping ordinance that we're working on right now. Maybe we can incorporate something in that to ensure that the B, the B and Bs are included. But also getting that low-impact uh, camping and when businesses are making money from their personal properties and they're not paying the tax, the T O T tax, ensuring that we're being aggressive in going after them. I know staff has been working on that.
And I know upstairs, they've been working on it upstairs, so, yeah.
We've got to get the tax where we can.
Well, I will ask him. I, uh, we do have, um, as you'll see in our next presentation, uh, um, Joe Paul Gonzalez will be presenting the O P E. He'll, he's not here this week. He'll be presenting at the next um, meeting. And they have been managing the Airbnb and the, the R B Os and all of that kind of thing. So maybe I'll ask him to provide a report as well on that.
That would be great. I really appreciate it. Otherwise, thank you so much Ramon, it was great.
And I will just add one more thing. Uh, you know, uh, Ramon and I have talked at length about the vacancies and the vacancy budgeting piece. This year is going to be really tight and I think we're going to have to uh, make some changes. We're just going to have to make the changes. So um, we're, we're working on that internally and um, hopefully we'll have a, a, a better handle on that and we can present something to you this next meeting.
That would be great. Thank you. Thanks Ramon.
You're welcome.
And I'm assuming we're moving on to one point C and you are presenting?
That is correct.
Okay, so take it away.
So the next presentation is uh, budget status for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We want to have a casual conversation with everyone. Should I wait?
Nope, he said keep going.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
This is to let the board know how we're doing with preparing for next uh, next budget cycle. So we'll go over the timeline, uh, items to consider and a few other things. General fund taxes are going to come up again. Let me see, we'll, we'll touch on department requests. O P E B, Calpers budget policies. Now, O P E B, O P E B is just so everybody knows, uh, we have it on the list right now because we, we want to remind ourselves that uh, we'll, we'll talk about it in May. We'll let you know about that soon enough. So far, we're on track to meet our budget timeline. In February, we, uh, all departments were able to enter their budgeting information into our budget platform. Uh, this year we had Open Gov do the training for all departments. It was a refresher on how to use the platform. I, I've met with departments throughout the ear- earlier part of this year. Um, we've been doing a lot of conversations actually about um, staffing. That was the main topic of conversations with every department head and budget preparer uh, for this budget cycle. In, in March, the capital project request forms were due to the Resource Management Agency. So this is the form that departments sent to R M A to let them know, hey, the, you know, these are the capital projects we, we would like to request for next fiscal year. Um, and we'll talk about that in May as far as what projects came in or what projects are rolling over from current fiscal year or previous fiscal year. Let's see. One thing I want you to maybe keep in mind are the May fourteenth meeting. Uh, that'll be the next special meeting for budgets. Tentative topics are the C A O recommended bud- recommendations. Uh, let's see, we're going to have discussions on capital projects, roads. So set your calendar, May fourteenth. A lot of the dates you have in front of you are from the State Controller's Office Budget, uh, Budget Guide. And so the goal is to have a twenty-four, twenty-five uh, recommended budget in front of your board by June six, June seventeenth of this year. And let's see what else is on there. Right now, our target date for final budget submitted to the Board of Supervisors for approval and adoption is set at August twenty-seventh. Um, so we're doing things a little faster than a year ago and so far, we're on, we're on target to meet a lot of these deadlines. So at this point, all departments have submitted their budgets. We're still working on capital projects and road projects. I will be meeting with uh, staff from R M A in the coming, e- either this week or next week. They're working internally on a couple of things. And then I'll meet with them to be prepared for that May fourteenth meeting. So the, again, the Board of Supervisors approved, recommended budget is scheduled. Government code um, tells us we should have it, we should have that budget on or before June thirtieth. And again, we're on target. We'll, we'll get that recommended budget e- early in June, mid-June. So some, some items to consider, I know we discussed ARPA a little bit in that previous presentation. Um, as Ray mentioned earlier, uh, there's, there's a scheduled meeting with department heads every month and we're making sure those projects are moving forward and on, on target. So some of the things to consider that are out of our control, our high inflation, increasing interest rates. This was on, on here a year ago. Uh, the economy, we're, we're still seeing high inflation and increasing interest rates. At this point, interest rates have actually maintained um, elevated and I kept this potential economic downturn recession because we, we really don't know when that will happen. And we, we keep that in mind as we build the budget, um, so that we can be prepared to pivot if we, if we need to. Uh, some of the needs regarding staffing have been addressed. You heard from um, Henny Ring earlier. We, we are improving on, on hiring folks. Um, so that's good. And then the space issue is, I know we have the library expansion and we had the fire a couple of months ago. So we s- we were able to move people around from, you know, their, the Hall of Records building out to different places. And all of these things have, have a cost to it. So uh, we're doing the best we can to make sure we m- manage to keep those costs low. So the first item we're going to see on our screen is related to the animal control uh, contract that we have, that county has with the city. And this contract, I, I gotta believe a couple of months ago, there was an item about this. I just wanted to let uh, uh, the board know that we have half a million dollars budgeted for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year as well. The current contract is in place from twenty nineteen. And it, it, this is an ongoing thing. I think one of the main budget divisions uh, for today's conversation about, you know, next budget cycle are the Community Programs Division. This is uh, budget unit eleven hundred. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we do have uh, senior services for, for advocacy. We have um, Jovenes de Antaño, Senior Citizens Legal Services, uh, Seniors Council. So these are all programs that have been part of ongoing uh, commitment on, on behalf of the county uh, to serve uh, the senior service, senior population in, in the area. And the total budget for the four programs listed is ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand forty. Something new we're doing for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and I believe we will have an item later today uh, regarding the competitive application process for other community programs in the ar- area. So this would be for nonprofits. Um, we're currently setting that budget at thirty thousand and you'll hear more details about that uh, from Gracie. I have this Board of Supervisors budget unit as an example. It doesn't include the, every single line item. Um, we have travel, transportation and then discretionary funds. Uh, we also have training and I think everybody's well aware of most of these items. Um, to date, every board member has used their discretionary funds. Uh, I believe Supervisor Zanger perhaps is the only one that has a little bit of discretionary funds available in the current fiscal year. Um, but, but for the public, uh, this is, these are funds set aside for every board member that they can use for, you know, to help out community programs in the area. Um, and it's at their discretion. It's, it's three thousand per supervisor. And if anyone's kind of wondering like, oh, what kind of programs are being supported with this discretionary funding? Uh, in the current fiscal year, we had an allocation to, or not an allocation, but Supervisor Zanger, I believe it's uh, Cooper's calling. I'm not familiar with every single program here, but it, you know, they, they can probably speak to that um, if they want to. Supervisor Cosmic allocated um, his discretionary funds to the San Juan Bautista Senior Center. Uh, Supervisor Gonzalez, she allocated a, a portion to Integrated Waste Management for Cameras, a portion to the San Benito County Lulex Scholarship Fund. And then recently, another allocation to the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Let's see, Supervisor Cruel and Satello, I believe designated uh, their port, a majority of their allocation for, what was it?
It's a scholarship.
I'm sorry.
It's a scholarship for um, the chamber for high school students promoting um, being a public servant or working in government.
Thank you.
It's for, it's for college.
Well, I think that's for this year, right? Like you're anticipating moving forward. I think for last year.
Training last year, yeah, you're right.
It was for the Economic Advisory Committee. We hired um, somebody to come in and do strategic planning um, with that committee.
Yeah, so we paid for that out of our discretionary funds. Thank you for the correction.
That's the one. Thank you very much. I just, I didn't have a lot of details for that one, but someone mentioned, oh yeah, they use their discretionary funding for the training. And it sounds like next year, you already know what you're going to do. All right, so that's it for, for that slide. For two thousand and eleven and nineteen ninety-one realignment money, these are uh, monies set aside from the state to help uh, county governments uh, with specific programs in two, for two thousand and eleven, uh, these are programs operated through our Behavioral Health Department, Health and Human Services, Probation, Sheriff, uh, District Attorney and Public Defender. And then for nineteen ninety-one realignment, it's specifically for Public Health, Behavioral Health, Health and Human Services programs. Now, both programs were projected to increase historically one point three percent from twenty-one to twenty-two. And then, I'm sorry, from twenty-two to twenty-three, it was one point three percent increase in, in these uh, funding sources. And then one point six percent from twenty, from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four. And the reason I don't have the estimated forecast for current fiscal year to next fiscal year is because there's still a lot of work being done um, on the state side. A few of us in the room went to a training in April and we heard that the state is a little behind with some of these uh, projections. So as soon as we have updated information, we'll make sure to um, take that into account for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle. Next, we have the meat of the presentation. So here we have the general fund taxes and it's a list of all actual taxes received for the past four years. And it also includes projections for current fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. I added to the slide. I added to the slide the general fund costs for salaries and benefits. Again, also actuals for four years and then projections for two. And one thing I did different this year is I added a, a line for the difference between our general fund taxes and our general fund, um, staff costs so that it can paint a picture for, for all of us. So as you can see, every fiscal year, if we look at the first, at the year of actuals, fiscal year nineteen twenty, I'm gonna take you down to the, to the last row. So the difference there is in parentheses and that parentheses means we don't have enough general fund tax revenue to cover the salaries and benefits for, for all general fund departments. Now, what that means is even though we don't have enough from general fund tax revenue alone, that difference is made up from all other funding sources. In this case, it could be AB one oh nine having an MOU with, um, subvented funds having an MOU with general fund departments or AB one oh nine, uh, through the CCP, the Community Corrections Partnership. There could be conversations between general fund departments going to those committee meetings and, and requesting that AB one oh nine funding be allocated for general fund purposes. And so that, um, those different funding sources that the general fund receives, which are not in front of us today, are what makes up for that difference. So even though we do have a difference in the general fund taxes, uh, are not enough to cover all, uh, staffing costs, we do have other funding sources that help make up that difference. However, we wanna keep in mind that even though we have funding sources from other places to make up that difference, we, we, we have to be careful, um, that we don't heavily rely on all these other funding sources, especially in a fiscal year where we know California is having a significant, uh, deficit. I, I, I believe the figures were somewhere near or above sixty billion dollars and the, the state is still trying to figure out how they're gonna solve that problem. And so we, we do have the, a lot of the funding sources that we don't have on the screen do come from the state. We have state from, I'm sorry, we have aid from state grants, state money. And so we're gonna be monitoring the situation very closely. And we have these figures up here so that board members and department heads and the public can understand that, you know, we're doing the best we can with general fund tax revenue as a base. And it's pretty good. I mean, it, it would be great if our general fund tax revenue would, would be sufficient for all staffing costs, um, on the general fund side of things.
I'll just add one, one point of, um, uh, another point to add to that is, is also, um, there are fees as well, um, that can offset the, um, staffing. And then the other part of this is the vacancy piece, which we gotta address. Um, so, you know, in the big scheme of things, we do need more revenue, period. So I just wanna make that very clear, that we have to look at, um, generating more sales tax or more, you know, um, you know, just gotta look at other sources of revenue. That's it. Just wanna make clear with that. Go ahead.
And one thing I'll add is that from the one year and a few months that I've been here, I have noticed that a lot of departments are going after new sources of funding. And they bring those items to the board and they let you know, hey, we're thinking about doing something new. And, and I think that sort of activity that, at the department level is, is tremendously helpful because now we see departments going after, whether it's new grants or implementing, uh, a, a new fee that perhaps was not implemented ever in San Benito County. Uh, I'm referencing, I think it was sher- sheriff's department. They, they brought in, they did a little study, you know, at the department on the range. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, it's a gun range.
Yeah, and that's something new for San Benito County. It was, you know, we, we didn't have that fee in, in the past. And so hopefully that, again, all of these new ideas can help offset some of the differences you see in front of you today. And on the general fund side of things, we have historically, uh, one of the concerns has been that the growth in expenses outpaces the general tax revenue. That's what we saw in that previous slide. In October of twenty-two, we had a three percent cost of living adjustment. In October of twenty-three, a few months ago, we had a seven percent cost of living adjustment. And, uh, in October of this year, we have another six percent, uh, adjustment coming, coming through. Um, so these items we, we saw in the previous slide do not include costs for normal operating expenses, aside from staffing, which are the services, the supplies and other costs. Um, we do have a, a heavy reliance on pro- property tax growth. And even though San Benito County has been growing, you know, historically year over year, I don't know that, you know, that's gonna continue, um, for the next three, four, five years. It, it really depends on local, um, economy and housing and those kind of things. So, so we're monitoring that and we're working with the assessors department as well as the auditors department, making sure that, um, we keep all of those things in mind so that we prepare for next fiscal year and we have a solid budget.
And, and I will just preface as well, just to add, uh, with the conversations that we've had with the assessor's office, is it, um, due to the fires, um, and, um, a few other things, uh, the, the rate at which we've been, um, calculating and budgeting for typically has been about seven percent on an average. We're actually gonna be reducing that a little bit this year. So our overall, uh, revenue will not be increased as much as we have historically. Um, it will probably regain itself probably a year after that, um, and they'll probably increase the following year. But for this year, just wanna make sure the board's aware of it, that number's gonna be a little smaller, um, based on the workload. They haven't been able to get as much workload because of the fire this year.
So on the OPEP piece, the, our auditor controller was unable to be here this week. And we're gonna set this, uh, th- this presentation is set for May fourteenth. Um, so we'll have an update on how we're doing with the OPEP trust. And on the KELPERS update, the KELPERS pension, these are figures from KELPERS, directly KELPERS online. So it looks like they have a June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three valuation of four hundred sixty-five billion dollars. It actually increased twenty-one billion. Um, so they had a, a time-weighted net rate of return of five point eight percent, which is good, but it, it didn't quite meet their target of six point eight percent annual rate of return. Um, it's a lot better, that five pers- five point eight percent, um, rate of return is better than a year ago when the KELPERS valuation were, it took a hit of negative six percent. Um, so we're not quite at the, at the valuation we had in twenty twenty-one of four hundred eighty-five billion, but it's, it's kind of working its way back up there. And the KELPERS valuation really, uh, is heavily dependent on the stock market and how it's doing. And, and we haven't, we haven't, uh, heard a lot of good news about how the market is doing as a whole. And so this will have an impact on county contribution to KELPERS. And here we can see that the twenty-three, twenty-four contribution for San Benito County on the miscellaneous plan, which would include all staff that are not safety. Um, that contribution is seven point four million. And for the safety plan, it's three point one million. The safety PEPRA, for folks that are not familiar with that PEPRA term, uh, that represents new employees after July first of two thousand thirteen, did I get that right? Two thousand ten? January first, two thousand thirteen. Thank you very much, Henny. And so that's what that PEPRA, uh, row, uh, that's what it means. It's for new staff, not, not part of the classic, uh, retirement plan. So for the contribution in next fiscal year, the projected numbers are one point three million dollar increase. Um, so I'm gonna bring us back to something Ray mentioned. Next budget cycle will be tight in, in part because of the different cost of living adjustments that we've, um, implemented as well as the pension contribution. And we're gonna monitor that situation and make sure we budget for that. These are items, pension, you know, these are items, we can't really cut these things. It, it, it just kind of is what it is and so we'll, we'll plan for that. On the right-hand side, you can see the percentage of, uh, funded. Um, these are for KELPERS pensions. So we're, we're at decent levels, sixty-nine percent, seventy-three percent for safety and eighty-seven percent for safety PEPRA. It, it just means there's a minimum, I, I believe, Ray, you can help me out here, but the minimum, what we're doing as accounting is we're providing the minimum contribution. And that's what you see in the twenty-four, twenty-five column, that eight point four million for miscellaneous, three point three million for safety and, and a half a million for safety PEPRA. That's the minimum contribution required. So the last piece, uh, we're gonna discuss our budget policies. So we do have San Benito County implemented a reserve policy in calendar year twenty-two. And the resolution I have on the screen today is the most recent policy update. So this policy was adopted in September of twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. It authorized the auditor controller to es- to establish a general fund operational reserve of ten percent of general fund expenses, to establish a general fund emergency reserve of five percent of general fund expenses, and to reestablish the disaster recovery reserve in an, in an amount not to exceed half a million dollars. So all this information, if you remember that first presentation where we talked about fund balance and we talked about how we, on the financial report, it shows as unassigned thirty million dollars. So even though it shows up on the financial report as being unassigned, the fact of the matter is that this board adopted a policy to set aside from that thirty million dollars, we have to carve out ten percent of general fund expenditures, expenses for the operational reserve. Five percent of general fund expenses for an emergency reserve. And so even though thirty million looks like, oh, it's a, you know, large amount, some of that has been set aside for the reserve policy. And on the next slide, we'll see some of the estimates related to those percentages. So the county had built, uh, had implemented a policy that established a buildup approach, right? It wasn't a lot upfront. It was, the first year, it was five percent for operational reserves, two and a half percent for emergency reserves. And the estimate at the time was four million dollars. So of that thirty million, that first year, four million is set aside for those two reserve accounts. And then on year two, which we're in right now, we, we moved up to the ten percent and five percent. And so for this year, the estimate is eight million. So now we're at eleven, twelve? We're at twelve million. And so it, it keeps building up. So year three estimate, right? If we continue with that buildup approach and if we adopt another resolution to move us into the fifteen percent set aside for operational reserves and then keeping the emergency reserves at five percent of general fund expenditures, that would bring it up to eleven million for year three. So now that thirty million, all of a sudden, is not thirty million anymore. Because we, we have to keep in mind that the intent of the board was to set aside, right? The amounts you see on your screen today for emergency situations or normal operating.
And I'll wrap up, I'll wrap this up by, um, just adding that, um, one of the reasons why we actually went ahead and established in a form, uh, a formal reserve policy was when we went to S, when we went and got rated. We actually got rated very well with SMP for the jail and behavioral health building. Um, and one of the things that, um, they recommended is to make sure that we set this, a formal policy up, so which we did. Obviously, this can always change and morph and edit if we need to, just so the board's aware. It doesn't necessarily have to be, can be this, but I think this is, um, this is good. And especially if we decide to move forward with going after more funding. If, um, as an example, if COG decides to keep in, influxing money to us, at that point, we could go back out and actually look at addressing the roads in a, in a larger bulk. Um, and then having something like this can actually get our rating up higher, which will lower our overall costs and our servicing. So it's a good thing that we have this, especially when we actually, uh, if we wanna go back out again and look at funding and getting the roads, getting more work done on the roads. So, you know, all these things kind of work together. I just wanted to share, um, some insight with that and, and the importance of it. Go ahead, um, Ramon.
That, that's pretty, that's pretty much it for today. If anybody has questions on every, anything we reviewed, um, how's the time or comments?
I know we have several public comments, so we're gonna open it up to public comment right now. Oh, not this one, it's. Oh, for the, okay, so this one, we only have a few.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers on this item, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Brenda Weatherly and after that would be Tammy Aldrich. And then Valerie after Tammy.
Good morning, Board Chair Curl and, uh, Supervisors Sanger, Cosmiki and Satello. I am Brenda Weatherly, the Program Manager for San Vito Leadership Institute. Recently, the board received a presentation from Dr. Kathleen Rose on our, one of our facilitators for the San Vito Leader- Leadership Institute. The program is set to launch in September of twenty twenty-four and we are currently accepting applications for the first cohort. I am here to kindly request twenty thousand dollars in funding to support the operations of this adult leadership program I represent, which will benefit all levels of our community through education. I understand that there is a plan to set aside a certain amount of money to assist nonprofit organizations in the coming year. I ask you to consider this request apart from these non- this nonprofit allocation and instead consider the expenditure under human resources, but training funding. Because this program has a stated vision to support all organizations, including nonprofits, businesses, community boards and agencies to bolster leadership capacity to do their work more effectively. The San Benito Leadership Institute's mission is to build a stronger community by cultivating a diverse group of new, emerging, existing and existing leaders who will effectively serve, unite and benefit the residents of San Benito County. We will, in effect, identify, educate and empower current and future leaders to serve on nonprofit boards, direct success of successful business, agency, organization and government activities for the good of San Benito County. We have designed a leadership curriculum that will graduate participants who can be the succession plan for elected officials, the workforce multiplier for business and government, the impact amplifier for nonprofit organizations and the connectors across all segments. If you believe that local leaders are needed to grow and serve the future of our county, I, then I ask for your consideration and support to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Tammy?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Tammy Obulas and I'm a board member of seniors council. And I just wanted to, um, address the slide on the seniors' allocation of money and thank the board for their support. Um, the funding that the county gives supplements, you know, what seniors council does in distributing the federal and state money and such. Um, and I want to also thank the board for making seniors a priority and continuing, um, finding solutions to help the seniors in our community, which, as you know, is, um, the growing population right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Valerie, you're next. Valerie, you're next.
Thank you. I'm sorry to always bring my cards up late. Good morning, everybody. This is Valerie Eglin, Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. And, um, I just have one question, uh, because it's so confusing to me from, uh, months now, uh, is, uh, what's the cost of using staff time for the sesquicentennial? Uh, considering that we have this vacancy rate? And why would we be using staff time when nonprofits are in the community who can do that more efficiently and are well embedded in our social structure now? So I'm just, just saying.
Thank you for your comment.
I have no other public comments.
Okay, bringing it back to the board, any comments, questions? Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Ramon. Um, couple, so I guess raise more of a question for you, but just had a suggestion, I would say, with the format this year with the budget. We have all these, with the budget, we have all these department heads, um, you know, coming to us eventually with, with requests for, you know, staff requests or facility requests, things like this. And then we get one sort of lump sum vote at the end, whether or not we wanna go with everything or nothing. And so I was hoping we could sort of parse it out a little bit this year, and so we could have a, a more formal process voting on, on individual things instead of just this all or nothing, because then it's, you gotta reject the entire budget if you really have an issue with one thing or vice versa. And so I don't know how we could go about that, but we didn't, I know, like, we have all these little things come up and we don't really have a chance to vote on each thing. We just have to accept the budget or not accept it in the end. I don't know if you have a.
Um, let me, let me share with you a little history and then maybe they can kind of, maybe we can talk a little bit about, have a little dialogue. Um, so when I started here years ago, uh, it was well over a decade ago, um, the, the board went through every single item, and then they went through every single budgetary unit item, um, which the budgets took over a week, um, about a week long to go through the whole budget process. So it was very time consuming and, um, there was a, there was a lot of issues that came with it. So what we decided to do is change that format and try to streamline that the best we can and have these meetings and go through some of these things. Um, I think, um, when you go through each item, and an item can be pulled just like regular, so if it's unconsent, you have a problem with an item, let's just say, we can, we can pull that item, we can discuss it. Your board, um, can vote on it. Um, it's a temporary due pass. If, if you don't, uh, want to approve that, you don't, you can say nay to that. Um, if the board as a whole, it's, it's, you know, they pass it three votes to two or, or four to one and move forward with it, um, it's still on the docket to, at the very end of the budget to, uh, uh, move forward with adopting the budget. And the board will then have to do that, even though there's a no, let's say, on one item. So, um, I guess for me, it's, this is a time to talk about what items you guys have of concern, and then we can bring those items back. I think that's probably what I would request. So if there's some items with the MTE count, could be, um, you know, I know we have a discussion later about nonprofits and allocation of funds, so we're gonna talk about that. Um, it could be, um, I mean, there's a lot of things we could talk about. Um, um, so, you know, in light of trying to streamline the process, that's kind of what we've done. I think in general, this year's budget, just going through it with staff and going through all the budget items, I think we're gonna be pretty status quo in not increasing any services and supply. Um, and really ultimately, the vacancies is what's bridging that gap, that, that, um, the gap typically, though, we've been ending up in the black because we're not filling the positions. And, um, that's really ultimately what's been transpiring. Um, so I guess for me, I just need more specifics, uh, from you specifically, what you wanna talk about. And we can have those discussions during, during the actual budget process. So we typically have put general fund departments, safety or other items on open, um, regular agenda, so we can talk about those items. And then you guys can vote on it. Yeah, or may, or edit it, or change it, or reduce the budget, or add more money to it, whatever.
Right. I, okay, I think that makes sense. And, and I know, like, like, last time we did discuss certain things, we discussed different positions and whatnot, but there wasn't like a vote, I guess, do we just have to be more formal about that process?
No, there is a vote. You have to temporary due pass, so you do vote on that. You, each item, you, you vote on a temporary due pass. It's just to move forward with a temporary due pass. Then you, you move forward with that. And then the final budget comes typically, could be, uh, we have, I think, a deadline of October within our, but, within the state budget comptroller's office that we have to bring it back to your board for final adoption. That's when that, that due date is. So we can come in August, we can come in September. Uh, and ultimately, what that means is, um, we are kind of status quo. We can't go and hire people. We have to kind of keep a status quo budget, um, just the standard operation until the board finally adopts it. There's been times when, when we've been able to get the, you know, all the, all the schedules done, we've been able to get everything done, and the board do a final adoption, an actual vote and adopting the budget in June. Um, but that's only, I think, we'll only be able to do that like one or two times when we've been fully staffed and had multiple people to help us, um, get through that process. So typically, we go through this, then we do the schedules, because there's quite a few schedules that we have to do, fifteen schedules. So there's a, a lot. I mean, as you see in the actual, uh, we don't have a depiction of it, but basically there's well over a hundred units that we go through. Um, so, you know, that are, um, that are consent and regular agenda items for each budget unit, and that's schedule nine. So everything that we discuss during the budget hearings typically is schedule nine. Then you have all the other schedules that wrap up nine, that, that ties in our reserves, ties in all the other, um, elements to the budget. So schedules one through fifteen outside of nine. Hopefully that helps. But I, but I, but I think you bring up a really good point. I think it's, this is the time to, to delve in, what is, you know, if there's concerns, you wanna add more money to a certain unit, or you wanna maybe look at streamlining or cutting something, this is the time, that's what we wanna talk about now, so then we can bring it back and have open dialogue in our next meeting. That's really what today's about. And ultimately, that's what these conversations are for, just to talk about this stuff.
Supervisor Satello?
Thank you. I mean, I think I understand what Supervisor, um, Zenger is saying. I think it's hard sometimes when we're brand new supervisors. I still think we're brand new on our first term, right? Um, sometimes we don't know what questions to even be asking, and sometimes I feel like I've got a much better grasp on it this year than I did last year. But sometimes it does feel like a, it's just such a snapshot, right? And, um, and we don't get into all the things. And so I don't know if there's maybe something where, um, I don't know, maybe there's just a little bit more detail or overview of the entire system. Like, I, I felt we, um, we spend so much of our time talking about kind of the general fund. We're looking at this thirty million, but that thirty million is of the three hundred million, really, and I mean, I'm rounding my numbers right now. But the three hundred million budget of the entire county, right? We spend so much time on the general fund, because that's essentially the only amount that we as supervisors have any say over what we can and can't do with. Um, and it's a small, a small number in our total budget, but that's really the only discretionary funding that we have. And so, um, I think that's hard for the public to maybe understand, but that was, it took me a minute to kind of wrap my head around, wait a minute. So we only had, there are like ten percent or less is what we actually, and then within that, it breaks down, it's very, very little what we actually have. Um, you know, that we can put towards roads or parks or anything else, um, because it, there's just such limited. And so I guess, you know, one of my questions is going to be, um, where do we start looking at ideas for revenue generation? I mean, um, you know, either revenue generation or cuts that we're going to have to make, it just doesn't seem, we, we will not be able to sustain this general fund expenses, um, exceeding our revenue for very long. It seems like it's kind of a dangerous place to be. Um, I don't know, just looking at the numbers. But I'm curious, is that a typical model for counties, uh, especially rural counties? That your, uh, general fund expenses exceed your general fund revenue? Or is this kind of a unique thing, and we need to figure this out and start exploring options? What I don't wanna do is wait until we're in dire straits and then our only option is to cut. I'd like to know right now, what are things that we can do as a county to possibly bring in some more revenue? Um, and, and I, I really, I don't know what all of those are, but if, i- if we can start thinking about what some of those things are, what our options are, what that looks like. Um, so anyways, that, that's just, um, you know, just curious if that's a usual model or?
Yeah. So, uh, you, so just, uh, just so you where that, that there is, um, we could ask and go out and get a sales tax increase, that's, that's one option. Um, we've brought that to the board two or three times. Um, the board decided not to move forward within the years past. Um, there are other, uh, other things, uh, looking at, um, you know, develop, uh, you know, bringing in the businesses and, and corporations. I know that, uh, you know, we've been working with the EDC, um, trying to establish that so that we can generate sales tax. With that, if you look at the portfolio, um, that we have, um, our sales tax is very, 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 very small compared to our property tax. So that's really important, because the more that that increases based on housing, that means that we have to provide more services, which is very difficult, because we're not generating enough. The revenues aren't in line with, with that. So I think it's very important that we look at other options. Um, I will say, I will say, I will say that the, when you talk about typical, um, one of the things that we were confronted with years ago was, um, it was difficult to hire people. It, there was a lot of complexities. And the board and, and department heads, we all looked at what options can we do? And then the one was the vacancy, kind of addressing it from a vacancy budget, allowing flexibility of departments to be able to, to hire. Um, because knowing that there is that gap, that, that rate that we have. If, you know, I think at the end of the day, um, right now, where, where we stand is that if we just, we put a freeze on things, I think we're okay. We're good. But the problem is, we don't, now it becomes difficult, because now we can't get other workers out there, and that's the difficult part. So, um, you know, we're hedging of, of the vacancies. Um, and I think last year, um, we, well, two years, three years ago, maybe, I think the board, um, had asked, let's just get rid of vacancies. And then when we're going through the budget process, working with department heads, and the department heads all felt that, you know, they still wanted that flexibility. Um, so I think we came back and, and we discussed that with the board. I think with regards to the, the slide that was brought up, the seven, uh, the three, seven, six and the higher, um, um, increase in, in healthcare, we are gonna have to really look at potentially freezing positions that we have on the books. And, you know, obviously, there's, there's SBs and probably ABs that are gonna be coming out to address, address these things. And I think we're not the only county. I mean, that's coming from a different, um, is it a SB or AB?
AB.
Uh, you know, Assembly Bill, that's from a different jurisdiction. And there, I think everybody in the state is under the same, we're all having the same issues of hiring, um, and being able to fill those gaps. Um, and I think, you know, it's, um, you know, this year, we're gonna have to be really cognizant of it. And I explained, explained that to Ramon, we need to be, we're gonna have weekly reports over that, because once we reach that nexus, we could be in that danger zone or, you know, uh, area that you had just mentioned. So we have to be, you know, at that point, we have to put the brakes on, so, um.
I guess I'd like to start looking ahead and like, what does some of those revenue generation, um, opportunities? And, and obviously, I know that, I, I don't know what they are, but, you know, is there something? And then what is the potential, you know? Um, you know, what is, looking at kind of everything and what would kind of some of those tweaks, what could that potentially bring in? When Measure H was passed with this business tax, what were we anticipating to receive from it? I don't, I don't know, I don't remember. Um, but were we thinking, oh, this is gonna bring in five hundred thousand? Were we thinking it was gonna bring in a million and the actual is at three hundred and that, you know? And, okay, well, if we came up with a plan for addressing this, well, we could capture maybe another three hundred thousand. I know those are the drops in the bucket, but little tweaks here and there may help us. And I think that we need to start, I, I guess what I would like to see is, I would like to see something being brought back to the board with kind of options and things that we could look at. And potentially, um, you talk about a sales tax increase. I really don't wanna go with a sales tax increase, but if we don't start to plan for the future, at some point, we may be forced to. What, what potentially, what is that bringing in? I think it's important for us to understand, sitting here and looking at all of the things that we have to manage within this county and the, um, some of the things that have been neglected for years, right? Like, and the compounding of how much more it's gonna cost with, you know, we talk about roads. If we don't get ahead of some of these things, we are never going to be at a place that is satisfactory. And so I think, you know, I would just love to, don't know if I would support, right? But I would love to know what some of these things, um, what these options may look like for revenue generation.
Fair enough.
So, thank you.
We can definitely do that.
Okay, Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for being here. Um, I, first off, I agree with the Speaker Val Eglin about the staff time on the sesquicentennial. I think I was obviously clear about that, and we approved that, that I agree with the event, but the extent that we're going to for the hundred fiftieth, I think, is a luxury we can't afford. Um, and that staff time does add up, and we're all, we're here talking about not having enough staff to do all these things, but we're spending it on something that's, you know, like I said, a luxury, and I, I agree, basically. Um, and then so I wanna start with grants, um, which are gonna be fewer and farther between, it sounds like, going forward for a while here. Um, but I also will say, I, I don't want us to be leaving any more money on the table with grants, and we have to do a better job. That's all of us, us included here as supervisors, uh, making sure we have that checks and balances of, of which grants are available. Um, you know, we had this embarrassing announcement from Zoe Lofgren that, that the county and other entities and governments and locally here didn't apply for one of the cycles of grants. Um, so we have egg on our face for that. I'd like to never see that again. Um, and then I'm on the Monterey Bay Air Resources District Board, and I, you know, I've been having to listen to several discussions about how San Benito County hasn't applied for these annual grants every year. And I have, I have, frankly, I have told staff about these every year. Um, and, and we're, so on that alone, we're leaving, you know, a six-figure dollar amount on the table. Those are dollars that are guaranteed to us as long as we fill out the application. So I would like to see us have, um, you know, a better handle on working with our grant writer. I think that grant writers, I don't know how those communications go. I don't, I mean, I, I, we probably don't need more ad hocks and committees, but if we do, you know, this is an area that I would actually support, uh, making sure that there's more accountability for grants and available grants. Um, and basically, the grant writer needs to have a checklist in front of them of, you know, okay, Zoe Lofgren and Senator Laird and Senate, uh, Assembly Member Rivas and Embard and all these agencies that have these annual grant allocations. We cannot, we cannot be letting th- those dollars be left on the table any longer, so I would like to see an improvement there. Um, as far as state issues go, um, as the CIO mentioned, it's very clearly gonna trickle down. I think even on a federal level here at some point, um, the stock market's been very unstable for a while. I think there's a, a good likelihood that it's, it's, we're gonna see some economic declines here in the years to come. Uh, and, um, and I noticed that our sales tech, sales tax projections look like they're, uh, creeping down. Um, so maybe we can get more on that, you know, you know, when the auditor comes back or whomever might be able to, um, provide more on that. Uh, and then, um, the pension liability, I think we have to really underscore that. And, and, and when Joe Paul comes back and gives us that report, it, you know, I think that would give us a much better indication of what we can and can't afford, because that's, those are large dollar amounts that we'll have to be setting aside if we're gonna be responsible, which of course we should. Um, I do respectfully disagree that we have that level of limited discretion on areas to put money aside. I mean, we did put, you know, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-eight million dollars, available dollars toward the roads. Um, and I, again, would like to see that as marked as an assigned dollar amount, not unassigned, because that does scare me quite a bit to see unassigned thirty million dollars and, um, you know, having that, we're committed to those roads, and I don't wanna see that changed, no matter what happens to the economy going forward. We gotta, we gotta fix our roads, um, and we need to adjust in other areas if that, if it comes to it. Um, and so, um, you know, there are some things we can do. I, you know, I pointed out, uh, you know, I, everyone says tourism isn't a, you know, it's not the, the ultimate solution. I agree to an extent, but we can do a lot better job with tourism promotion, and I would like to see us come back. We've been talking about it intergovernmental, about, um, working with the cities on officially finally branding ourselves as, as Home of Pinnacles National Park and putting out signage and doing more to draw people and opening eyes to our area, not necessarily just for Pinnacles, because we have some issues there logistically with parking and things that need to be solved, but. But to draw attention to a lot of our other attractions, our other businesses that we have here, that people can spend a weekend here, a day trip here, um, and enjoy themselves. We have more availability of, you know, some availability of, of, you know, the short-term rentals can help with the shortage of hotels. Of course, we need more hotels. You know, I would obviously, you know, would support some sort of a, and maybe for economic, the Economic Committee, some sort of, um, hotel incentive program to get hotels here, because that, that's really a big start to this whole thing. If we're going to promote tours and, and, and project that we're a place to come as a getaway, we, we need more hotels frankly. So, uh, I think those are areas. I also will point out, um, it's, it's been quite a while, I don't know if it's been a year or more, um, that I've asked for this, uh, park sponsorship item and it's kind of gotten lost at the committee level. I know Parks and Rec has talked about, um, you know, this, this idea of establishing sponsorships in our parks, especially with the regional park being built. I think that's a big opportunity. It's not going to solve all our problems, but these are those little dollar amounts that add up that we keep talking about. And so, yeah, those are just a few. Uh, on the Board of Supervisors budget, just to go through some of these slides, I'll try to be quick here as, as I can. You know, I would like more information on the train, training and transportation, uh, budget and, which I think is basically the travel budget and costs for various sessions. And a lot of those are necessary, I'm not questioning any of that. And I think the folks that are assigned to CSAC and NACO, you know, there's certain, um, I think are, are largely, you know, beneficial, um, trips that are taken. But, um, I would like to see more on that. And then, um, and just to clarify all the areas of the budget, because we are the elected officials, I, I would like a little more detail on, um, uh, areas of the budget that account for travel, memberships, transportation, um, what that actual picture looks like. And then, um, I'll just say between the, the travel training budget for the board, which those are always things that you look at when there's a recession, and then the discretionary dollar amount of fifteen thousand dollars that comes to like forty-four thousand dollars. You know, I, if we're going to talk about, you know, uh, you know, donating to nonprofits, I'd, I'd, I'd rather see it come from maybe something like there. I have been very clear about the nonprofit thing and I'll get to that in a moment. As far as the recommendation slides, I think we definitely need more on animal control. I know there's some stuff going on in the background and, and the county is looking at developing a, uh, more robust or at least some updates to how we handle animal control, especially in light of the, um, these abuse situations we've seen in the community lately. I would like to see a little more on that and look at what we can do as a county to make sure that those types of things don't happen. Obviously the SNF, um, organization as well is, is, has been a benefit to the community. And those are dollars I think that largely we spend and you get a benefit back because you have fewer of those animal control issues that come with that. As far as FTEs go, I think especially, um, definitely, we, you know, I definitely would want to wait until we have a further clarity. But I, in general, considering, I'll talk about it again, the hundreds of millions of dollars in road repairs that we need to do, the hundreds of million, millions of dollars in facility repairs to do, the hundreds of thousands of dollars toward programs that we all have set as priorities. I, I don't think, for me, I, you know, I can't support any new positions this year frankly, and I'm not going to. And, um, we're at that point where, um, you know, we've got to start really focusing on these infrastructure issues. And I've said that over and over again since I've been a supervisor, which brings me to the community programs. You know, my position on this has nothing to do with feelings on profits. I'm, I'm very supportive of nonprofits, um, and the efforts of the people in this room frankly. And I've been, but I have been consistent as a supervisor, you know, before and I will again say that I don't believe it's the role of county government, especially a county government that, that doesn't have money to fulfill basic essential necessities such as repaving the roads and upgrading our facilities to a level that's adequate. I just don't think it's appropriate for us to give away tens of thousands of dollars, um, to a select few nonprofits each year. And I, and I will say, this is a systemic issue that was put in place years ago. And I've always said, prior politicians set this precedent years ago. It was, I, I believe it was a way to gain favor in the community politically and that's really what this is. And I, as a leader, I have to be willing to look at people in this room and I have to be willing to say no. If I believe it's the, it's the wisest, this isn't the wisest use of limited tax dollars. We have a bit, you know, and that's why I wanted to bring up that unassigned dollar amount. We, we really don't have a reserve, a reserve at this point. We're kind of rolling the dice a little bit here with this gradual buildup. If something very significant happened in the next year or two, frankly, we would not have reserves. We would have to, I don't want to dip into those road dollars and that, that's why I want to get that as, as assigned. I, we're going to have to look at very difficult decisions if there's, um, you know, if, if we go into an economic recession, for instance, even a minor blip of a recession, we're going to have to have very difficult decisions here ahead. And I haven't even mentioned, um, you know, the money to the hospital that, that we're, we're setting aside. And, and we don't even know the exact dollar amount we're going to need to, to really to support healthcare, which is an, if you want to talk about what's essential, healthcare is at the very top of the list. And so, um, that's another uncertainty for us as a board. We've talked about money to the, obviously the roads, we've talked about money to other priorities such as homelessness and illegal dumping. We just don't have money for all these things unfortunately. And, and all these, you know, what are, what are viewed as relatively small dollar amounts, they do add up. And they do set a precedent that the county is, um, I don't know if you want to say loose or flexible with, with money, but you know, a couple hundred thousand here, a couple hundred thousand there, thirty thousand here, seventy-five thousand there. Eventually you're going to add up to half a million, a million dollars and, and those are real dollars. And so, um, again, I'm going to try to get through this, I'm almost done here. But, you know, when I walked around, you know, I, I went door to door for, I don't know, ten months or something. I gave away my secret, the election's over, right? I went door to door probably more than I would, probably anybody has. I, I just went door to door every weekend for ten months, during the week at times, talked to thousands of residents over and over and over again. And, um, I kept hearing this, a lot of the same themes about, as, as all of us do, the roads, fix the roads, fix infrastructure. You go on social media when people start sort of mocking some of these expenditures, why are we doing this when we can't do that? You know, so these are the things you hear. And I never once had somebody tell me, you know, when I went door to door, I never once had somebody tell me that, um, you know, my top priority is, is to, you know, set, set aside a six-figure dollar amount to the nonprofits every year. I just, I never heard that once. So, um, I have to go by what I'm hearing as a representative and I have to prioritize roads and infrastructure. That's what I'm going to do going forward and it's going to require difficult decisions and people not liking me and I have to live with that. So I believe we have to set aside a multimillion dollar level going forward toward the roads every year out of the budget. We're not doing that right now. The elephant in the room here is that once the Measure G, sales tax dollars, which we get about four million dollars a year toward, for Measure G toward the roads, once those dollars, once the Highway twenty-five project starts, we all hope that sooner than later, all of that four to five million dollars, this is in, this is in writing, this is going to happen, is going to shift. Those are current dollars that we're using toward roads that are not adequate as, as it stands. We are going to lose four to five million dollars every year once Highway twenty-five starts for local road repairs. And we have to find a way to fill that gap and we really should start doing that now. And so, uh, that brings me back to the groups. I've said before, the senior services, um, we've been doing that for, forever. And you, you know, at this point, you cannot pull the rug out on an established level of support for a basic function like senior service organizations. And I was a supporter of, for instance, putting in the CPI and saying, we're, we're committed to the senior groups. Ninety thousand dollars at the time, increase it each year by a CPI dollar amount. I'm still supportive of that. I don't want to pull the rug out on the senior groups, but I do not, and I cannot support setting aside money for, um, choosing a select groups of nonprofits out of the hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five nonprofits we have in this community, to give them a relatively small dollar amount for them that really isn't going to make or break their budgets. And, you know, these are, you know, nonprofits have the ability to raise money in the community, so it's not going to, um, end anybody's organizations. And so, um, I do, if, again, um, the majority of the board has spoken, I believe the majority of the board may still support the thirty thousand dollar allotment. And, and we're in, if we're in that direction, I do support, um, and I have said openly, I'm the one that really pushed for the application system. Because if you're going to give away thirty thousand dollars each year to nonprofits, um, then, then I don't, I don't believe it should just be the few nonprofits that may or may not know about the program. We really have to be aggressive in letting all the nonprofits, the hundred and seventy-five, whatever it is, they should all get a letter in the mail basically that says, um, you know, here's this opportunity, you'd like to apply, uh, please do, here's the application for it. I just don't want to see this be something where it's just a few nonprofits that know about it. And, um, and again, top priorities are roads, the hospital, the other infrastructure issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry to, I'm going to kind of try and go through my list as quickly as possible. But, um, when it comes to grants and grants management, I'd really like that topic to be brought to the finance ad hoc so that we can actually get a better understanding of, of going after the ones that we need so that we don't have to create an ad hoc. Supervisor Cosmickey and I are on that. I think we could utilize the ad hocks that we already have. When it comes to roads, um, I really feel like we need to have a long-term plan. I totally agree, a long-term plan on how we're going to address roads and fund roads. But that also means we need to be looking at our bonding capacity and how we can leverage our, um, accounts that we have, where we have money sitting and how we can look at, um, funding these projects long-term at a very low interest rate, but having a master plan in place. But I also feel like we need to be looking at our road standards and not, we can't have the Cadillac version. We can't have Caltrans version of road standards for, um, roads that maybe they just need to have a, a grind and an overlay or something where we, we need to have the right road repair for the right roads. So that the high-capacity roads are getting the most, um, attention and quality. And the lower capacity, and I'm sorry, that, that means, you know, my rural South County, but they would be happy with a grind and overlay instead of these, you know, massive, you know, Caltrans standards. So I think we need to look at that and have that brought back to the board for a conversation. When it comes to animal control, um, I really would like animal control and the topic of animal control to be really collaborative with both cities. We do have problems with our current ordinance where we have islands within the cities of Hollister and I believe there's an island in the city of San Juan, but I could be wrong. But we need to make sure that if we have inner-city islands, that they have different standards for animal control requirements than outside of maybe the sphere of influence of the city. So I really would like Intergovernmental to be the one to tackle that, um, with Supervisor Cosmickey on that right now. And I believe I'm still on it, if, if I appointed myself again, I'm sorry, I'm confused about how many committees I'm on. But we need to collaborate with the cities and have the cities at the table with the conversation. I agree that we can't solve these problems alone, we have to collaborate. But we also have to recognize that the city and the county, if we don't start working together instead of against each other, we will not solve the problems. So I'm just using animal control as one of many conversations. Intergovernmental has also discussed bringing all shared services from both cities and the county so that we can see the big picture. It's not, you know, are we paying too much on one service to the city or we're paying too much on another service from the county? We need to look at the big picture. And I completely support that being continued at Intergovernmental. When it comes to hotels and TOT tax and, uh, future, um, um, improvement tourism in our community, I completely support that and I believe on the next meeting, we have an item for, uh, Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren to help support some of that. And I hope that we get board approval on that support letter. But at the same time, I, I think we have to look at our general plan and our, um, how we can incentivize, um, hotels and boutique hotels to be more interested in our, our, um, community. If we don't get the roads fixed, the hotels aren't going to be successful in, in our areas. So we have to look at the roads and the, 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 um, tourism as a collaborative complement of each other and how we can promote that, very much support the branding of Pinnacles, Home of the Pinnacles, very much support drawing people here, but if they can't stay here, that sales tax isn't enough. We need that TOT tax to really be, um, beneficial and to build that. When it comes to, um, the presentation, I want to thank Ramon and staff for this presentation. When we go back to slide ten, which is the general fund taxes, and it shows the last four years of actuals and the projections for this year and the projections for next year. One of the things I want to make sure is very clear, the, the, um, uh, vacancy budgeting, is that applied in that thirty-six thousand dollars of projected? It's not applied in my opinion. If we have the vacancies fully funded and we hired, we would be, how big would that multimillion dollar number be? It'd be well more than six million. I, and I can pause there if you want to make a comment to, uh, CAO Espinoza.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, Ramon can as well. But typically what we've done over the years is there's a, there's a negative number and there's a gap. And every year when we budget, we budget out of reserves to fill that gap. But the vacancy budgeting is ultimately what's covering it.
Yep.
So every year, whatever that number is, that's what it is. And we usually typically use, uh, reserves to, to offset that. We can obviously work on that and, and change that.
Well, what I want to look at is just so the public is fully aware, if we funded every
Oh, yeah.
and filled every vacant position in our county, what would that difference look like? And I think the public needs to understand that because it, it, this is truly us just buying time. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna catch up with us and we need to address that.
Absolutely. And ultimately that negative number, you just look at the six million, that's what it is. And every year it compounds. So the next year could be seven million, eight million based on pension and other things. So, um, and ultimately you'd have to use, you'd be burning up reserves and then we'll be in the
Right. If you're not putting enough in reserves to actually grow your reserves, you're really not solving your, your problem.
And ultimately that's, yeah.
Okay, and then, you know, when it comes to the state budget, um, I, I was at CSAC last week and, um, there's a statewide initiative, voter initiative out there right now that is really, really scary. And after sitting in the governance, um, uh, subcommittee, it, it's, it's, what it would do is any fee taxed fine, I'm talking a license that, uh, that we charge. If it didn't go to a vote of the voters and it was implemented since January, I'm going to pull my notes up real quick, implemented January of, one of twenty twenty-two. If we've implemented a fee, a tax, a charge, um, they, this voter initiative is going to cause all of those fines and fees and charges or taxes to have to go back to the voters for approval. The cost of those elections are going to be substantial, but the cost going backwards is going to be very scary. And at this meeting, we started talking about state mandates. And the conversation of state mandates and the statewide budget crisis that we really truly are in, they don't even have a handle on what the actual number is. It really, we had the, the committee, uh, the Commission on State Mandates there speaking and answering questions. And I sat there and I just couldn't take it anymore. And I, I, I spoke up. I wasn't liked by the Commission on State Mandates, but I said, when do counties say enough is enough and we cannot burden our local residents with the fees and costs of programs from the state that are not being funded? And when do we say we, we can't do it anymore? Because what's going to happen is we are going to have cuts come from the state. And these services that are essential life safety services for many of our residents, these programs will have to then come before this body and we will have to decide if we say, can we supplement that through the general fund to keep that program? Or are we going to have to say, we can't do it anymore? And we can't, we can't help support the state's goals when we can't get our infrastructure even fixed? You know, the safety of our community is at risk. I, I just had to stand up and say, when do we say enough is enough? When it comes to contracts and consultants, the one problem I have, and it, it's an area that we've got to dive into more, is, um, and I'm hoping next, at the next, um, meeting, uh, one of our items will help address this, is we have to really look at our bidding and contracting and, and holding contractors accountable. Because if we don't have staff to perform these services, we're at the mercy of contracts and consultants. And how do we find a balance between what's, um, what's profitable for the county and efficient for the tax dollars by hiring staff and, and doing items in-house versus contracting and spending money on a private in-house versus contracting and spending money on a private entity to do this, and we get maybe not the level of service or quality of construction that we may need? And then I'm gonna end with department heads and Supervisor Zanger's comments about maybe having more information brought to the board during budget time. It used to be back in the day that each department would come before, and yes, it took an entire week, and it wasn't necessarily the funnest meetings to be in. But the departments would come before the body of our, our group here and, and tell us what's going on. And so I feel that we have gone to the complete opposite of that, where we're not actually hearing as much from departments and their challenges with either state mandates or staffing challenges or other items. And we need to kind of find a balance between budgeting based on, well, we need to start just, you know, do what we did last year, because we made it through last year, and we'll, you know, start freezing positions. But we're not really addressing what the problem is in the, in the room, is, is we have a ton of state mandates that we're funding, and we aren't getting any revenue to do these programs. And what programs are actually helping our community? Are our residents actually being efficiently with tax dol, tax dollars served? And if we're serving only a handful of people, then we need to really push back at the state and say, that money, you're, you're funding these programs? These programs are only helping a handful of people. If you let us have control of that funding, we will be able to serve not only those people, but more. And, and that's where, at the NACO level, we've really made some headways with federal funding, that it is bypassing state earmarks, and it comes straight to the county. I think we've got a new momentum happening at the federal level. Besides that, I, I do feel that we need to get more feedback from departments, and I just don't know what that could look like. So with that said, I'm going to pretty much stop unless there's any other comments. Sorry to get on my soapbox.
Madam Chair, a couple of things that I took note of. One, the library budget. I'm hoping we can get, take a further dive into the library budget when we have our next budget discussion, in light of some of the issues that have gone on there with allegations of theft, and what impact that had on the growth of the library budget, and whether the library budget realistically should be where it is, A. And then second, and I know we're gonna be doing an expansion, so that, you know, perhaps that should play into the context there. But in light of the expansion, I also would like to know the plan for what the library is going to be doing for those months or longer. And for instance, this would be, to me, an obvious area, and maybe HR's ahead of me on this already, but this would be an obvious area where, you know, we probably shouldn't be hiring people for the library right now, considering the library is gonna be a much smaller version of itself for quite a while, while we're doing the expansion, and we frankly don't need a number of employees that we have to cover those services when that happens. I'm hoping to have that conversation when we talk again. And then the other one, the county council's office. Obviously, we went out and hired a private firm for county council services, but I would, would like to take a little bit deeper dive into the, the growth in the county council's office, because eventually, you know, I think the vision there was to not, was to actually have a more efficient budget with the county council's office and streamlining things, and so we'd like to look at that as well. Thanks.
Any additional comments? Okay. If we don't mind, I know everybody's waiting for the next item. Can we just take a three to five-minute break real quick? Is that okay?
It'd be fine. I was just gonna, can I comment?
Absolutely. Comment.
So, you know, one of the things that, maybe just to give a little insight for the board, typically, we're trying to get all the Schedule 9s done, which is a lot of work. I know that the departments have finalized, for the most part, Ramon, correct, submitted all, all of the budgets. So we received the department's, you know, request for the budget. What we could do this year, it's just gonna be a long day, which I'm totally fine with, is, is we could go through and populate the budget and go through the items like we've done in the past, have the department heads here, and scrutinize it. Or, you know, you can provide us some feedback on which departments you'd like to look at a little closer. For the most part, most departments are gonna be status quo, for the most part. That's, that's ultimately what's, what we're looking at. Not too much of an increase on the, on services and supplies, other than if there's a special need, a project, tower project, or other things that we have to address. So I just wanted to kind of ask your board if you guys wanted to look at something like that. We could maybe, you know, hybrid it a little bit and delve into it a little bit more, if you like. And we're open for that. I'm open, because this year, I think we're gonna have the budget done sooner than we have in the years past. In the years past, we're scrambling just to get it, because you have to publish it 10 days in advance. And we do, we are actually, on the timeline that you saw, I'm not sure if Ramon highlighted that, but we're up, we're up a week on the June, so we're hearing, the, the hearing's gonna be on the 17th. Typically, it's the last week of the year, but it's gonna be on the 17th. So then you have to publish it 10 days in advance. So ultimately, the, the budget has to be done almost, you know, June 1st for publishing. So, but this year, I think we're gonna have it done sooner, which it could be, you know, we could probably talk a little bit about it and have it ready for a discussion if you wanted to delve into it further or closer. So just, just open, open for that, if you guys are willing to, wanted to do that.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yes.
Was that your, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Do you want to make comment?
Well, yes, as well, I guess.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have it ready, and we'll have the budget ready. I'll work with Ramon on that. I haven't talked to Ramon in advance about this. But we will have it ready, and then we can have, literally have the backend system there available, and we can go through each item. Or we can just pick and choose. We'll have it ready for you guys to look at.
I just wanna, you know, to, to continue the conversation, that departments should be looking at what are being, what, what the state and federal are pushing down on the departments to be doing, and, and are these programs successful for our community, so that we, as your elected officials, can actually start to have some conversations with our representatives with some background. I mean, I appreciate everything staff did to pull the old state mandate stuff. That was very helpful. Thank you, CAO Espinoza, because having that information is very powerful when you're talking.
Awesome. Thank you. That was all right.
Yeah, yeah. I could go into a whole, I think another conversation for another time is, is how if we do not start actually voicing and going to the state mandate commission meetings and talking and, and representing our, our challenges, we're gonna be at the whim of whatever happens at the state level. So I think we need to get more involved there.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Okay. With that, let's just take three minutes, okay? Just three minutes. Nice stretch, little break, and then we'll get right into the last item. Start, we're gonna bring it back. I appreciate all the public's participation, and thank everybody for being here. Okay, we're gonna bring it back, and we're gonna move on to item 1D. And I believe Gracie's going to be presenting on this item.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the community. This item is regarding the Community Programs Fund. As our budget officer mentioned, this is a division under, I believe, the CEO's office. The Community Programs Division primarily, primarily used to allocate to community-based organizations, providing services to the most vulnerable individuals and families in San Mito County. In fiscal year 2017, 2018, the Board of Supervisors modified the program and froze the allocation of 120,000. The program was segregated into two sections, that is, our senior-based organizations and our community-based organizations. During the recommended budget in fiscal year 2021 and 2022, the Board of Supervisors eliminated the grant to other nonprofits, but re-kept the senior services. And if you can, as shown on the screens, you see the four senior services that we continually provide funding for. I also included them in the staff report. The board also approved a 3% increase to these organizations as well. At this time, we are hoping, or if there is an interest, to bring back the nonprofit grant application. In the staff report, I did include a draft for your consideration and review. Let me just pull that one up. So, in this application, we do provide a brief overview. In the first page, is there criteria on how we anticipate determining which organizations receive, receive funding and which do not? We are hoping to compose a committee of five members that include two board supervisor members, county administrative officer or designee, a health and human services representative, and a fiscal representative from either the auditing's office or the CEO's office, that would be our budget officer, to review all the applications and make a determination. It also includes a cover sheet where we ask preliminary information, the organization name, contact person, and then the amount requested, population that they serve, documents that they need to include, and then the required two signatures allowing the applicant to submit this application to the county administrative officer. And then we also include the narrative, which tells us a little bit more about the organization, what their program or event or whatever their agency entails, how they hope to allocate this funding and use it in providing the services. And essentially, it just goes, it's not a long application, it's a brief, short one, but it does ask a few questions for us to consider and make that determination, whether we allocate funding. So what we are requesting today is either formal approval of this application, or any, provide any feedback for staff to make any modifications as seen appropriate by the board. We are also asking for a consensus that the fund allocated to this specific program will only be 30K. And with that, I'd like to invite our CEO, if he has any comments, or turn it over to the board.
I want to just add a comment, and just, and this is for the 24, 25 budget year. Typically, when we roll out projects, typically, we have the board approve the budget. So typically, it's gonna be after the board, we get approval from the board on the budget allocation. So I just wanted to be clear, I know that this was put on, I was on vacation last week, so I wasn't entirely sure of this particular item, but I just wanted to be clear with the board that typically, you know, the board has to approve the budget first. I just wanted to make sure that was, the board was aware of that.
Okay. Let's open it up to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. There are quite a few in chambers, so I'm gonna call out the first five. As you come up, the next party that is in the line, please just come right up. So we'll start with Elvira, Elvira Robinson, and then James Connor, Canyon Sayers, Janine, and Danny.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to make some comments to you. I sent an email about a month ago to Supervisor Pluro requesting some sort of funding for our native non, nonprofit, which is pending. And we're the Indigenous Nations Diversity Network, and- And last year, we had our first Native gathering. This year, we're having our second Hollister Native Gathering, which is gonna be held at Bellato Park on September 7th and 8th. We intend to honor our culture in this event through dance, storytelling, arts and crafts, classes, food, and we will also honor veterans. And we intend to have a lot of youth participate in all aspects of this event. Our mission is to educate, preserve, promote, uplift, celebrate Indigenous culture, art, history, languages, traditions, and beliefs. We aspire to educate and advance the physical and psychological well-being of Indigenous people while advocating for the sustainability of natural resources. Our budget for our Native Gathering is $40,000, and that includes security, facility fees, costs for the dance groups, canopies, instructors, marketing, and more. We would appreciate any financial report. I know you all know me more as a lawyer in town. I've been a lawyer over 40 years and my association with Gaveling College, which has been over 35 years. But this is true to my heart, and I believe, and to answer your question, Supervisor from my district, Cosmiki, this would draw tourism. This is so important for the youth, for our community, and for our Indigenous roots. And I know Canyon will talk about that more. We had our Indian market for 35 years in San Juan Batista. Sadly, it ended. However, Lena and I went to the high school last year, talked to Sean Cannonbaum, and he supported, said, "Use the high school." And we had our first Native gathering for Hollister, which was wonderful. And now we want to expand to two days at Bellato Park. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is James Connor, and I am locally the Senior Wardener of St. Luke's and Little Bridges Preschool, bilingual preschool, and also co-founder of the IDN, which is the Indigenous Nations Diversity Network. And we're seeking funding for basically education and cultural continuity. And we seek to bridge these divides that are established in a single pathway for children as it progresses through the educational journey by forging some strategic partnerships and organizations such as Little Bridges Bilingual Preschool and the Hollister Youth Alliance and IDN. We can ensure that every child receives the holistic support that they need to thrive academically, socially, emotionally. And the research underscores the critical importance of continuity in education with the longitudinal studies consistently demonstrating the positive impact of sustained support for academic outcomes and life trajectories. Moreover, investing in education continuity is not a mere act of optimism, but a strategic imperative for the future prosperity of the community. By empowering our youth with the tools and resources they need to succeed, we lay the groundwork for a more equitable and vibrant society where every child has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Summary, I urge you to seize up the moment and the opportunity to champion educational continuity equity for all children in the community by allocating funds to support education continuity programs and affirm our commitment to build a brighter future for our generations. And part of what we're doing with IDN is trying to service a very underserved class. I believe, and as a member of a tribe in Montana, I'm Native American, I'm a Seminole. I have lived here, you know, 30 years. I didn't even know the Indian Canyon existed until a few years ago. And our cul- our culture is being assimilated, and we need to preserve our culture. And many years ago, we had our Indigenous gatherings, and we just had our first this last year at the high school. Now encourage support of this as probably one of those underserved cultural travesties in our country. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mishmin Tuiz, Connercot Canyon Coyote Woman, Sayers Roots. And fundamentally, I want to welcome you to Mutisinoloni Territory. That being said, there are three tribal community groups that call this place home and have been stewarding this land since time immemorial. Our ancestors have always come from this land and stewered this territory. I am a representative of Kostanoean Indian Research, a 501(c)(3), that is the administrative arm for our tribal community, Indian Canyon Nation. We are turning peak in a year. And actually, I would love to invite you to a gathering that we're organizing in Indian Canyon on the only federally recognized Indian country between Sonoma and Santa Barbara, along central coastal California. That being said, I also am in support of this gathering proposed by Indian Bellato Park because it helps serve our community, both Indigenous peoples and community members who don't know a lot of truth and history because our education system and our governing structure has not really been as inclusive as it could be. Now, I really want to support the idea of Indigenous organizations being supported by all governing structures of all counties and all territories because you are on stolen land. However, I also want to remind counties that by supporting your community and by offering funding, you will fundamentally support organizations that build capacity for our community to become stronger members of society and to support organizations that then help us be responsible for these places that we call home, of which you will then inspire community members to strengthen their academic opportunities, communal responsibilities, and efforts of just being a reciprocal, humble community member that does in part support the greater infrastructure. Because as a part of a grassroots nonprofit organization, we help so many community members in AANNA, NDD, Nature Deficit Disorder, ecological restoration, so many efforts of opportunity come from communities helping small nonprofit organizations. And so by these counties, by counties supporting nonprofit organizations with small grant opportunities, it helps build their capacity, of which has a ripple effect that impacts us all. So I recognize the concerns, and I value and validate making sure we support these things. Since I consulted on that woven project, and a lot of criticism came from, "If we had that money for the beautification, why doesn't the money go to the roads?" I'm like, "Hello, that actually helped Indigenous communities and peoples." So trust me, I hear the criticisms, and I recognize the feedback of our community, but if we don't know what we don't know, it's that these things are all intersecting. So I just want to remind you that support the small organizations that help communities and support Indigenous peoples because everything reminds us how to be good ancestors and training. Honor the past to shape the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And next?
Well, I just found out about this meeting last night. And so I, my name is Janine Perdue Riddle, and I am the founder of a brand-new nonprofit organization called Bee Proximity. And I founded it back in 2020 as a result of the tragic murder of George Floyd that the whole world witnessed. And I started it on my back porch, and it grew to the Garden Shop, and then a couple of years later, to the Alps Lodge. And that movement was because more people in our own community were interested in hearing stories and coming together as we watched our community here grow and become more diverse because of the houses being built. I'm sorry, I'm super nervous.
It's okay, you're doing fine.
Cosmiki Collin, he's not only my supervisor, but I consider him a friend. I live on Union Road. My house is adjacent, literally, to the bridge being built right now. The last time I was in this room was probably 11, 12 years ago as a result of the poor infrastructure and roads living there. There were multiple accidents where cars ended up on my front lawn four times in two years because of the poor infrastructure. So, I say all that to say, I was here advocating for what I now see happening. So hats off to, I totally agree with Collin in a sense that our infrastructure has to be a priority. I have been, my family has been directly impacted, and our safety has been at stake in regard to it. With that said, I also believe in culture and enriching our experience here in San Benito County. I've lived here almost 20 years, and I'm proud of this county. I was, I felt like one of two or three Black people that lived here almost 20 years ago. Nevertheless, San Benito is special. It's very, very special. And so with that said, I'll go ahead and tell you what Bee Proximity is. I know there's been a lot of conversation. I just want to take this opportunity to let you know who I am, let you know that I am in support of the roads, and I am also in support of nonprofits. And I think that over time, we can accomplish it all. And so Bee Proximity is committed to building and fostering community with and for people who are racially classified as Black in America. Working alongside other community members, Bee Proximity Organization is, is that something?
Yes, unfortunately, that's the three minutes. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, Dani Varela. And then after that will be Melissa Sosa, Caitlin Amador, and Connie Padron.
All right, good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me be here to share this information with you. I just wanted to thank our Board of Supervisors for their support of Jovenes de Antonio. Again, my name is Dani, I'm the Executive Director for Jovenes de Antonio, our Senior Center. We have been serving Hollister and the county and San Juan Batista for 49 years. Next, in 2025, we'll be celebrating our 50 years. So, we're excited about that. But I wanted to just come and share some information with you. Our Senior Center is a wonderful place. It's where our seniors come and feel safe and feel welcome. They are excited to be there, and the funding that we receive from the county, the grant applications that we are able to submit, we are grateful that we are selected to receive those fundings. It goes directly to meals. It goes directly to the seniors, and it stays in San Benito County. It's a good thing. Your dollars are, with our nonprofit, is able to, we're able to stretch it. We're able to do something amazing with it, and meeting the needs of our seniors who can't leave their homes, who are receiving Meals on Wheels. The seniors who are coming to our center for social interaction and for meals, it's a wonderful thing that they have, they have trust in us, and that trust is in partnership because of what you guys do here at the, at the county level, providing funding for us. So thank you so much. Thank you. I have brought along with me today some of our, some of my staff and some of our seniors to just share with you their experiences about the phone calls they get, about the work that they do on the front lines with our seniors. So the funding, again, I'm gonna say it over and over and over, it's going to good use. It's getting stretched, and we're able to reach about 200 people in our dining room, about over 2,000 meals in our dining room. In our home delivery meals, we're sending out about approximately 9,000 meals in the first quarter of this year. So it is going far. The funding that we get from the county, from Seniors Council, from the city, support from our donors, the community coming together to support our seniors and provide a safe place is great, and it's going, it's going fantastic. And I'm just grateful that I get to lead such a wonderful organization and a wonderful staff who cares and loves our seniors and a county that truly shows their support for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Hello, my name is Melissa Sosa. I am the site and Meals on Wheels Coordinator at Jovenes de Antonio. I would like to thank you for all the support you have given us to serve our seniors here in San Benito County. There's a lot of seniors in need of our programs in this county that are getting out of hospitals and nursing homes and that live alone, that are homebound, that depend on our Meals on Wheels program. Our dining site is a great way for our seniors to get out and socialize and help them get a balanced nutrition meal. We hope you can still, you can still help us support our programs that we provide for the seniors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, everyone, good morning. My name is Caitlin. I am the Program Court Support, sorry, the Program Support Coordinator for Jovenes de Antonio Senior Center. I appreciate the funding we receive. It allows us to serve our seniors, especially when it comes to providing the meals to the seniors. Thank you for your support, and our seniors are truly benefiting from our service. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Connie Padron. I work for Jovenes de Antonio. First of all, I want to thank you for your support for the past 40-some years. It has been great knowing that we have the county and city support to provide the services to San Benito County, to the elders of San Benito County. I wanted to give you some information as to where your money goes. Last fiscal year, we provided over 46,000 meals to about 300 antiquated seniors. This year, as of seven months, the first seven months, and due to the increase of housing, we have opened the doors for people to come in, we have increased our seniors. As of, for the first seven months, we have provided about 29,000 meals to 360 antiquated seniors. That is a huge increase for us. So our monies, or your funds, is helping us provide these meals to all these people. It is, it is not our major funding, it's only about 6%, but that 6% allows us to provide at least 3,000 meals. So it is, it is difficult to think that we may not have that because who are we gonna cancel, who are we gonna say no to? You know, when they call and they want a meal. So, but we are not in that position right now. And I want to let you know is that we are very thankful for your support, Jovenes de Antonio, and your support to the seniors of San Benito County. Also, one minute to the detail, we are mandated to have non-matching funds from governments that include San Benito County and the city of Hollister. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comment.
Next in chambers, Nellie Casares, and after that would be Clay Kemp, Valerie Eglin, and Ruben Reg.
Hello, I'm Nellie Casares, and I'm one of the seniors at the Senior Citizens, and I enjoy myself a lot going there. I almost go every day. I don't miss it. I do my exercise, and I play bingo. We have a good time, you know, and the meals are great. And after we eat, we play bingo again, and we mingle, we talk. We have a good time with each other. We talk about things that happen in our lives to each other, and we have a wonderful time. And I hope we could still keep on going with the funds you give our, you know, we enjoy all the meals, like I said. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Good morning, Clay Kemp, Executive Director of the Seniors Council, which is the area agency on aging of Santa Cruz and San Benito Counties. We are essentially a nonprofit doing a government or quasi-governmental role. We receive state and federal dollars to provide funding for all the programs that the county is currently matching. We're actually the primary funder. Getting those dollars is a mandate for the county if you want to get them. The condition of receiving those dollars is that there has to be local match. And for the AAA, for the Seniors Council, it's actually mandated the local government provide a portion of that. So just to correct that, that if you want the dollars, you don't have to provide the match, but if you want the dollars, you do. So just letting folks know that. The population of older adults in San Benito County is growing the third fastest rate in the entire of any county in the state, which is really interesting. The second county is Alpine County, which made their high percentage with only 23 additional seniors, so very small rural county. So there's a couple of things I, you know, I want to talk about. The first is just thanking the Board and staff for the support. It's tremendous, it's a great way to use local dollars. And I think we all know that having a nonprofit run a AAA is more cost-effective than having government trying to do it. And I think we all know that having a nonprofit run a triple A is more cost-effective than having government trying to do it. And having the two-county partnership allows us to be successful in having adequate infrastructure to provide that support here in San Benito County. That is threatened right now. SB twelve forty-nine, which I think all of you received a letter of concern that, that we put together, um, threatens to have individual counties petition to split partnerships or take over nonprofits. So, we're working actively to oppose that. And there's two parts of it. I think everyone is hearing a lot about that aspect to it. But a second part that is, I think, equally of concern is that it will allow the state of California to set statewide priorities for all communities. And right now, one of the beauties that we have as a local triple A is local triple As get to prioritize where dollars are spent. And there's several examples of those in the last year that have really benefited our community. One of them is keeping our nursing home protection program alive with local flexibility. We wouldn't have that. And then before I get off the mic, just a couple of other things that are going on beyond the traditional delivery of service. One, May thirtieth, we're having a solution summit where we're bringing together community leaders to prioritize services for seniors. Two is that we're starting up a senior volunteer program. You'll see that coming around the end of this fiscal year. And then lastly, um, we have about five hundred emergency backpacks, which we'll be distributing to older adults in our community.
Okay, thank you, Clay. Thank you for your comment.
Hello, and thank you for having me here. My name is Ruben Rodriguez and I'm a new senior. So, I started coming over here just to see what it was. And I started meeting people and talking to them. And it goes back to when you're alone and not having any friends. If all your friends are gone or moved away or whatever. This place brings in kinda like a, a feeling of going back to school, having friends, talking and doing that, which it, to me, it feels good. And I'm pretty sure that the other people around me that are having the conversations with one another, they realize that, you know, they're not alone either. And it's real, uh, I guess, real, feel, feels real good. And I thank you for having us, backing us up, for sponsoring us. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon again. Man, so many issues, so much stuff on the budget. Man, I'm overwhelmed. Um, kudos to all those who speak about the seniors. They have paid their way. They deserve to be supported. I don't think that's ever been an issue in San Benito County. Uh, but I sent around, uh, uh, in email to all the supervisors, a, uh, letter from Cal Nonprofits that describes, uh, uh, one thing. I urge you to invest significantly in your community's nonprofit organizations. A second, compared with all other sectors, investments in California's nonprofits can be counted on to ensure spending and hiring in low-wealth communities, keeps funds in the region, employ more women and people of color, bring in more dollars from out of state and provide more services to communities efficiently. That's kind of one, one of the issues, um, that it saves the county money to support the nonprofits. Because we all, uh, work on those areas where people slip through the cracks. These are, these are areas in which the county does not have staff to take care of their specific concerns. It might be a, a, quite a large group or maybe a very small group. But these are areas in which the county government, for the most part, is dealing with the large things that keep our infrastructure going, that keep, uh, our people informed. And it is the nonprofit that is picking up the slack. And this is one of the things that, when I was reading the, um, grant program overview, uh, that was provided, I said, you know, there's something just really, I don't know what it is in here that's bothering me. And so, I started throwing words out of here into a Google search. And so, basically, when you look at governments that do not support nonprofits, churches or charities, are socialist republics. And it is because the government feels they provide and there is no question about what we provide. And therefore, nonprofits are the only groups that come in and question that. And they say, there is this pocket that needs attention. We can work on that and make it more cost-effective than the government.
Thank you for your comment.
I have one on Zoom. Tanya Redino, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate all the hard work of the supervisors and I don't envy, uh, your position in having to make these difficult decisions. Uh, my name again is Tanya Redino. I'm a relatively new executive director for Senior Citizens Legal Services and we have been a bedrock of critical free legal services in San Benito County for many decades. I hope you all have heard of us. Uh, we are fighting homelessness, nursing home abuse, isolation, physical and financial abuse. Um, a lot of hard work our legal team provides. Um, if I can briefly, quickly respond to supervisor Cosmicky's comments. And with all due respect, I really wanna urge the board supervisors to not consider funding new nonprofits as a view of political favoritism. Truly, funding nonprofits is providing critical services that the county would otherwise have to bear on their own. If Senior Legal Services is not providing free legal assistance to keep people housed, the county ends up paying those costs of increased homelessness. And everybody knows that prevention and, you know, assisting with that side of things is way less than the county ends up spending per individual unhoused. Um, also, similarly, if we were not providing free legal services to help people maintain their incomes and help them fight for their public benefits, do those people also are at risk of ending up on the streets? And again, the county bears the cost of paying those, uh, the, the, those amounts of money. So, I really, really encourage you to continue funding senior service organizations. As Clay Kemp wisely described, uh, seniors are definitely the fastest-growing age group throughout California. Uh, the sixty-five to seventy-four-year-old population is expected to grow twenty percent in the next five years. And sadly, homeless seniors is the fastest-growing population of homeless individuals. So, I really urge you to continue funding, uh, our organization and other senior service organizations. I will say that Senior Citizens Legal Services has received a very small grant over the decades. It is at the four thousand dollar rate. And as a relatively new executive director coming in, I've had to look at that and kind of balk and question, you know, what we are providing in San Benito for the small dollar amount that we receive. Uh, we did, uh, traditionally come once a week from Santa Cruz to a shared office in the senior center. And since that time, we are now housed in the epicenter in the community foundation building. And we have a full-time paralegal who is there twenty, not twenty-four hours a day, feels like it sometimes, but, uh, you know, five days a week. So, we're full-time in San Benito County and I wanna see that continue and I wanna see that increase. I'd like to have an attorney in San Benito County as well. Again, our services are really critical. Um, we do have a really successful eviction defense collaborative going on currently in Santa Cruz County. And I would love to see that mirrored in San Benito where we're working directly with the.
Thank you for your comment.
I have no further public comments.
Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Zenga?
Yeah, I have a question just on this, um, the, the grant, uh, program overview here. Um, so it says the committee will rank each application based on approved scoring sheet. What happens after that? How does, what's the process like?
After we score all the applications that we do receive, we come back to the board, uh, for a recommendation and approval of contracts, if that's the desire.
Okay. That's all I had to question about.
Okay. Supervisor Cosmicky?
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. Sure. Um, yeah, my, uh, you know, I think, like I said earlier, the majority of the board supports the thirty thousand dollars. You know, I am, I believe I'm the one that pushed for the application in, in the event that there's support for the thirty thousand dollars. Um, I'm just wondering, um, since we, we don't have supervisor Gonzalez here today, how that, um, a couple of questions. One, uh, if we have, well, first of all, the timeline issue that the C A O brought up. I'm just wondering, you know, how we deal with that. I mean, I would, I guess it seems like, since this is a twenty-four, twenty-five allocation, that the timeline should probably be pushed out, you know, to, to twenty-four, twenty-five. So, we probably shouldn't. And I apologize, I didn't catch that when we had finance committee and we briefly looked at the application. Um, that didn't cross my mind when we had those conversations. But I do think that would be appropriate to push out the timeline on this to twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, because we don't have a budget yet. We haven't approved this. I think we would probably have to do, uh, maybe even a budget amendment for twenty-three, twenty-four if we're gonna start this process now. Um, but, so, all that said, if there's support from the majority, I know supervisor Gonzalez is not here. I don't recall, I think we had this conversation about the thirty thousand dollars, did we not, as a board? Uh, yeah, for twenty, uh, three, twenty-four. Correct. We did. Say it again? It was last year, for the last year's budget. Is that what you're asking? I just wanna make sure that there's support by a majority of the board for the, um, I've already said I support the senior allocation, just the thirty thousand dollars. I'm willing to support, I'm getting at is, I'm willing to support moving ahead, given consensus. Although, if we're gonna push out the timeline, we may as well wait for supervisor Gonzalez to get back, um, to agree on, on, on the thirty thousand dollars and the timeline and all that. But, um, but again, like I said, I'm willing to support the application process if there's a majority of the board that supports the thirty thousand dollar allocation. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
That's all. Thanks.
Supervisor Stello?
Thank you. Uh, so I come from the nonprofit world and I understand how critical nonprofits are. Um, and it's not, you know, it, it's definitely not about, uh, trying to be popular sitting up here. Uh, it's about trying to make a difference in this community. And I think that coming from that, I see all of the good that these nonprofits are doing. I see the way that in many times they're able to do things that we in county government, um, can't do or maybe it would cost us a lot more to do or, um, it would take us a lot longer to, to get done. So, I would like to see us do more than thirty thousand. Um, you know, I looked back at our budget presentation from last year. Um, what was listed as other nonprofits was a hundred and fifty thousand. And so, um, where we're kind of getting this thirty thousand, and if I, I can remember correctly, R C D got money. Um, I can't remember what the exact amount was. There was, I thought, ten thousand dollars left over from that. Um, anyways, I just think that, um, it, they just, we are able to stretch what we're able to do when we partner with the nonprofits and we're, um, able to do more in this community, touch more people's lives. I think, you know, our goal should be equality of life for everybody and that includes infrastructure, that includes, you know, our roads, but it can't all be in one pot. We have to, um, be thinking about kind of what are some of the other needs in the community? What are some of these other critical services? What are we not offering? And I think that, um, the nonprofits have done an amazing job. I think most of them are not coming to us for funding. Some of them are though, and in a critical time or a critical period in, in a service that they're trying to do, um, that really benefits. I think, um, earlier with the events that they're trying to plan, I think there is, um, benefits in, you know, bringing in, uh, extra T O T or sales tax or different things. So, I think that it's a, it's a partnership is the way that I see, um, you know, the county working with these community-based organizations. I, um, you know, like I said, I really would love to see us support this, but I would love to see us support it in a larger dollar amount. Um, and, you know, I just, a huge thank you to everybody that came today and that spoke. I think, um, it's incredibly important. We need to hear from you. And I'm so appreciative for all of the work that you are doing for our community and making it better and increasing the quality of life for all of the citizens here. I know we have a long ways to go, but I truly believe working together, we can get a lot farther. So, thank you.
Okay, um, so, just to be clear, this applica- what, what's before us right now is the application process for twenty-four, twenty-five. Not the allocations that were done in twenty-three, twenty-four. This would be for future. And this application does not stipulate within it that it is for any dollar amount or a budget amount that's been approved by the board. So, my, my feeling is, when you say push it out, are you saying push out the item, supervisor Cosmicky? Or are you saying that we're not saying we're, we're approving thirty thousand dollars or approving any of the funding for nonprofits, whether it's seniors or not? What we're doing today is we're giving feedback on the application process so that it can come back with some feedback when we do have the discussion about funding at the majority of the board. Do I have that wrong?
Um, well, the application pro- the application lays out that the application process would essentially start like right away. So, that's the issue. The application timeline is, we basically would start accepting applications, is it May first or April something? I mean, it's like right now, basically. So, that's the issue.
Um, so, just the overview on how we wanna review this. We're bringing the application for your review and feedback. Based on any feedback that we receive, we would implement the changes. However, we would start to, uh, push out the application. April thirtieth would be your outreach. We could place it on the county website for nonprofits to view and kind of get an understanding of what documents they need to collect. May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, that's when we would open the application process for any nonprofits to submit their application. And then so on and so on, um, would be the timeline. But we are more than, based on recommendation from the board, we can definitely push out that timeline or come back with a revision.
Yeah, I, um, if I may.
Oh, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just, I don't, in principle, I don't think it makes any sense to start an application process without actually approving the program and the funding for the program. So, we don't know what's gonna happen between now and, uh, July first. Um, there could be a calamity that occurs and then we're, we're pulling back on all of it. So, um, so, yeah, I, I, I just, that's what I'm saying is it just, it makes more sense to start the application process during the fiscal year that's where the, the funding is actually available. They know the funding is gonna be there and that there will be support for the thirty thousand dollars. That's all.
And that's what, also additionally, we were hoping to get consensus on thirty K.
Well, yeah, and so, with that being said, I just wanted to bring a point of clarity as well. So, uh, there are different pockets of money. There, there's really three elements to this. I wanted to make sure the board's clear on, uh, cause it is somewhat unclear, I, I think. Um, there is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have allocated for, uh, economic development and associations that we're a part of. So, M B A P is one and there's different, different, uh, ones, the Opportunity Zone, a few other, uh, um, folks that are part of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that years ago was, um, allocated, um, uh, by the board. And, um, there was, um, discussions, we've had discussion, ongoing discussions about this. And, uh, they passed board and I believe this board as well feels very strongly about the elderly in our community. So, they basically froze that and said, look, it, they don't have to go back out to apply or, or do anything like that. And, and they added an escalator to that. That's what that, um, there's a schedule in, in the, in the actual staff report that outlines, um, the senior groups and the funding that's been allocated from twenty-one to twenty-two and so on and so forth with three percent basically escalators for every year. So, we're at the ninety thousand, uh, forty dollars and seventy cents this year. And so, basically, it's the difference of that is that where the approximate thirty thousand comes from for, for the nonprofits. So, that's, I just wanted to be a, a point of clarity on that. And I think just from a budgetary point of view, I think, um, I think it's important, we just wanna get feedback. It, for me, coming into this kinda a little bit after the fact, I think it's good to get feedback. Is, is the application something that the entire board is okay with? I think the, I think we really do need to get board approval on the program itself first before we start running with, with the program. I, you know, even if the board's one hundred percent willing to do it, I just, I hate to put staff's time to it and something blows up. and something blows up or something happens and we wasted time on it. So I just, that would be my request, just, you know, having this start the new fiscal year. That would be my, my request to the board.
Okay, I don't have a problem pushing it out. I support the application process. I think this gives the public an opportunity to see what the application process will look like so they can start to prepare. That's the part that I want to have available, is that they understand there will be, if this board decides to approve moving forward in the future, that there would be an application process. And then I do want to have a conversation about economic development and that funding process and how we can maybe look at that differently. I think Supervisor Cosmickey and I were both in agreement, it, it's something we have to address. And that should be something that's brought back during the budget process. So I don't have a problem pushing this out as long as the public knows that we're moving towards, if this body decides to move towards an application process, and then the allocation can happen at a later date.
Yes, Supervisor, hello?
So, in regards to the, I'm fine with us putting it to the twenty-four, twenty-five, I support that. As far as the application, I'm just curious, sitting on the Economic Advisory Committee, I know that there are some groups that are looking for some funding to really add, you know, hopefully provide more economic opportunities, bring in more revenue and create opportunities here in the community. They, reading this application, they would not qualify for this grant, right? Am I reading that correctly? Because it says, "The targeted population of such services must support at least one of the following groups: youth, disabled, economically disadvantaged, senior citizens, and then other." And the example was abuse prevention and protection.
I would say that we would have to definitely address the wording to be able to do that.
So I guess that's just where I don't want this wording, I think we need to work on that some more.
Okay. And I, I feel that the strategic plan needs to be looked at with, you know, from our workshop and making sure that this is falling within what our goals are. Supervisor Zangor, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, I guess, so I understand, but the, so the economic development, though, we have the one fifty set aside for economic development, like a separate pot, right? I think that might be why it's not addressed here, is because this is, there's already one fifty for that. This is out of the one twenty to thirty remaining, that isn't for seniors for this type of sort of nonprofit work. I think that's, that's just be, that's why I think it, it's okay the way it is to me just because we have a whole separate larger amount, well, assuming we go with the thirty or something, we have a separate larger amount for economic development. So I, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is.
So are we saying that we're going to fund nonprofits out of the economic pots? Is that what we're saying? I mean, I feel like we're opening a can of worms by then creating all these different pots. And, well, this nonprofit would, you know, fall under here, and this one falls under this. And, and the other one that I would mention is Reach. Where would Reach fit in within this group? And here they are promoting our parks and recreation in our county. So where would they fit in under this application? Youth, I, I mean, but they, it benefits everybody. I just, I want to be careful of how we're doing this, that we're not excluding anybody, that we're very inclusive in this process. I would also say the grant applicant would be a five oh one C organization. I don't know, is that really that necessary? Some are a five oh one, so we're not saying C three, they just need to be a five oh one C. They could be a C four, five, six, three, it doesn't matter, they just need to be a five oh one C designation of some sort. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just didn't want to make sure that we didn't just narrow it down to a five oh one C three. So, okay, I'm good with that then. But I just want to make sure we're really inclusive of this process.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
Well, my, my memory serves me correctly, there was a will on the board to, to, to set aside, and I'm not saying I was in the majority on that, but to set aside a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is a very large dollar amount for economic development. So I don't see why we would allow folks to apply for the economic development pot of money and then also apply for this very limited thirty thousand. We might have spent thirty thousand dollars on staff time already today. I, so, you know, we're talking about a relatively small dollar amount, but, but it's a lot. And, you know, I'm concerned we're getting into the weeds where we're just going to keep spending a lot more money as the point was brought up earlier about on staff time on this program that should just, we should just try to simplify it as much as possible. I believe the hundred fifty thousand dollars should be on the table as well and that we don't necessarily have to stick it back into nonprofits. We can put it back into the roads. We can put it back into other areas, potentially. Maybe it's still economic development in another way. But this is why we have conversations about the budget. And I'll just say about Reach, you know, I'm sure they'll find a way to apply for the, for the money. But, you know, we have a hundred and seventy, a hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy-five nonprofits. I don't, I don't, they're one of a hundred and seventy-five. So if we're really being aggressive in how we do outreach to the nonprofit community then, you know, each nonprofit might just get a couple thousand dollars. And only going to, if that's even the case, there's fifteen nonprofits out of a hundred and seventy-five. I guess my larger point is here, I, you know, I think we're spinning our wheels quite a bit and, and let's have the conversation about economic development and see, see where the majority of the board stands.
I'm good with that, is bringing it back and having the full conversation. Because I think there needs to be a conversation so that it, it's all.
And I wasn't trying to, I'm just trying to be clear on where, if we're not funding that through economic development, that we have to as part of this one, right? I'm not saying, oh, well, then I want them to be able to apply here and over here too. I mean, I think what I'm being ta-, what I'm being, what I am saying is being taken way out of, like, that is not accurate at all. What I am saying is that we need to be clear from the front, from the get, on how we're doing this. And so if it's in, if there's an economic development pot and that's how we're going to handle anybody that's doing tourism, hospitality, the things that fall under economic development, I just want to understand the process because it's not clear to me. And so if that's how we're doing it, that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for separate pots, I'm just, I want to be clear on it. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I think you bring up a really, really good point because historically, we've obviously had it in different pots, you know, and not purposely trying to confuse people, it's just that that's how the, how it's been worked out, which, which definitely, I think, brings to light maybe what we need to do is consolidate all of those, no matter what it is, whether it's, you know, R C D or whatever it may be, just have them all listed so we all know, you know, what we're supporting and then, and just a little clearer for you and for the public when we're addressing this during the budget process. So we'll work on that for the next meeting we have.
And I just want to make it clear, just because you applied does not mean you're going to be funded. I'm sorry. We have to really be strategic. If we do end up funding this, we need to be strategic on how it's going to benefit our residents. And everybody has a great cause. I, I support everybody that gets into a nonprofit. That's a tough business to be in, but we have to look at what will benefit our community the most. So I really like the idea of bringing it back as a whole and looking at the economic development side. Thank you for the presentation. Any other comments? Okay. So with that, we are going to go into closed session, so we need to open public comment for closed session.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, with no public comment, we are going to go to closed session. And we will return when we return because we have nothing after, right? Okay, thank you for everyone's attendance. Thank you so much today. Back. There we are. We're coming back from closed session. And county council, is there anything to report out?
Just that information was given and direction was given to staff.
Okay. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a great day.